With the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
All right, is there support?
I support.
Thank you. Julie, please.
Ms. Persett?
Yes.
Mr. Draco's? Oh, he's on mute. Hold on.
Steve, you're on mute.
Thank you. Yes.
Ms. Clarity?
Yeah.
Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weeman?
Yes. Motion's approved. We'll move on and we'll move to high school leadership class and Amelia.
Hi, I'm Amelia. I'm the leadership president. Um, so we were just going to talk about what's going on in our class right now, so we can go to the next slide. I don't know if I'm controlling it or... I don't think I am.
Amelia, I'm sorry. After I share a screen, it just takes a minute for my page down to work.
That's okay. No problem at all.
Just bear with me here. There we go.
Okay, yeah, so our class have finally been able to split into committees because we haven't been able to do this previously because of COVID and not being able to see each other. So now we are split into our committees and we've just been getting to know each other and talking about our guidelines and our goals for the quarter. And right now, all of the committees are working on Black History Month boards. So each committee is doing some aspect of Black History Month. So one of them is about Malcolm X, one of them is about Rosa Parks, et cetera. And then we're starting to plan our events. So then the next slide. Um, so the committees that we have, we split it into the white cohort and the green cohort. And since the green one is larger, there's um, five on, no, there's six on that one. Right. Four for the white one, five for the green one. We have Charity Week, SOS, Strive for a Safer Drive, Mr. and Ms. LO is just on the green team since we have more kids. And then the New Event Idea Committee, which is just set aside for whatever the kids think is a good idea for something we can do in a COVID-friendly manner this quarter. And that's all we got.
All right. It sounds like a lot to me. Are there any questions for Amelia?
Thank you, Amelia.
For all your good work and thanks for keeping everybody glued together. It's a pretty challenging time and you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll move on to presentations and we'll turn it over to... Ben?
Well, thank you. We have a student achievement presentation this evening and Missy Bucky, our data specialist, is going to present. Heidi, did you want to say anything leading into that? Or are we going to turn it right over to Missy?
Nope, it's going to go right over to Missy. So thank you, Missy.
Awesome. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to share my screen. Hang on. You can probably see I'm in my husband's office. Okay. Okay, um, just like I was there in the fall, um, we do some screener data for all of our students K through eight. We don't have a nationally normed screener for our high school students, but I do have a little bit of data on them right now. So also, we're pretty lucky in the way that we have this data. I sit on a couple committees for Oakland County and the state of Michigan. And because winter screeners are not required, there are a lot of districts who chose not to do them. I encouraged us to keep on track with giving the mid-year screener so that we can get a a better view of where our students are at and take some action on the information. So one of the first things I want to start with is that as you look at this data and listen to what I, how I explain some of the information, it is not a learning loss. That is a word that's been put out there over and over and over. And we have to remember that our students have not had a loss. We, I say we as in, as in all of us have defined it as such because we're trying to compare our students to achievement that was normal. In other words, we're comparing where our kids are at based on benchmarks that were developed two years ago or even further. So this wasn't a normal situation. We didn't change the benchmark. We didn't bring the finish line closer. We definitely kept things where they were a couple of years ago. Things have been said about COVID slide that we're going to have these gaps and losses and deficiencies. And we are, and we're solving them and we're finding ways to bridge that gap and continuously bring kids closer to what was normal. Since March, our students have had to change their schedule multiple times. They've had to deal with going to school, not going to school, going in the morning, coming home in the afternoon. They have had to shift their normalcy multiple times. They've had to learn new ways to communicate and new ways to stay connected. They've had to learn new things, chores around the house. They had to take on new responsibilities. They may have had to take on loss. They've had to take on the enormous amount of social media that has gone on through multiple events in the last year. And for the first time ever, they've had to learn what shelter in place means. And I know that my own kids have said, when can I go to my friend? When can I see my friend? So if we consider all of these social emotional things that our students have gone through, we can't call it a learning loss. They have learned a ton. And an old Greek philosopher kind of said that our minds are not vessels to be filled, but their fires to be kindled. If you add a little bit more kindle on the fire, what happens? That flame gets larger. They don't leak and we don't measure them in months. There have been so many reports that I have read and listened to webinars where they measure kids' loss in months. Like they, they put all the data together and they say they've, in math, they've had a two-month learning loss at this grade level. I think that it's an interesting calculation, but it's also a concept that is a little bit ridiculous. So with that, we must acknowledge that all of our students, without exception, will have come to school, learned something important and carry enormous potential to continue learning. So I'm going to go through some winter information and I will do a little bit of comparison to the fall in two different ways. I'm going to look at things in terms of benchmarks. So where are kids meeting that mark? And also, how are they doing in terms of growth from point A to point B? And I use all of our FastBridge data information. So this is a nationally-normed assessment, suite of assessments that we use in Lake Orion for both reading and math in grades K through eight. And just a reminder that these benchmarks were established in 1819 when things were normal and we weren't hoarding toilet paper.
So how... Missy, I want to point out one thing that you mentioned before, and I think it's very, very important that these data points that you're using were from 2018. And you had mentioned it before that we did not adjust our goals or our learning targets due to COVID, which is very, very important. We, we have held the same high expectation and intend for our students to actually meet that goal without, as I said, trying to adjust it because of COVID. A lot of districts have, have moved their target. We felt very strongly that we did not want to move our target. The target is the same. We will help our kids get there, but did not find that it was in our students' best interest to lower the target.
So how are we doing compared to those targets? So overall, what we have right now in the winter of 2021 is 68% of our K-8 students are meeting reading benchmarks. And in math, we have a little higher percentage, 73%. Now, we don't have K and one in the math calculation because we didn't require our K and one students to do the math mid-year screener. They had a lot of other testing to do, so we left that one off the plate for just K and one. The other thing we have to keep in mind when looking at these results is that the computer adaptive assessments that grades two through eight take were taken remotely. FastBridge does claim that they are reliable results, but as we know, it does reduce the reliability a little bit, knowing that kids were taking these at home, possibly getting help from parents or getting no help or technology was an issue in the beginning. So some of these may be a little unreliable or less reliable, but for the most part, we are, we're here in the winter. A lot of admin sent messages out about not helping your children. That also may account for some of the differences in the scores. How does that compare to previous years? So it's nice to know where we are now, but where were we before? So I can take our information from FastBridge about two years back from where we are now, when we started using this largely in the district. So reading is in blue, math is in green. So starting from 1819, you can see a steady, they kind of crisscross, math and reading will crisscross. And then there's a slight decline into 2021. The next slide I'm going to show you is a zoomed-in version of this because as soon as you take that scale and in, actually reduce the scale, you're going to get a more dramatic effect. I just wanted to show the percentages as we moved along the continuum. So same information, just zoomed in. Again, take a grain of salt with the computer adaptive being remote. So not terrible. So let's break it down by grade levels. I'm going to start with math. The green bars are the percentage of students who are meeting benchmarks in the winter. Keep in mind that benchmarks move from fall to winter. So they increase in every grade level. So the gray behind the green is where, how many, what percentage of students met it in the fall. So as those benchmarks increase, we're still keeping our kids on trend for meeting benchmarks in math. The third grade dip there, I can tell you from being the math specialist for a while, third grade is where multiplication comes in. That's a difficult concept and then division comes in as well. So I can understand that slight dip there in third grade. But they were taken remotely on the benchmark slide. So looking at this information, I can see we're we're doing a great job for COVID in our math curriculum. Our literacy results, a little bit different. Let me explain, same idea, that the gray bar are where we were in the fall for kids' meeting benchmark and the blue is where they are now for meeting benchmarks. It's a sliding benchmark. And you can see that we have K and one because we didn't give that in math. But this change here, I want to explain what's happening. When I showed you data in the fall, you might remember the first grade was really at risk. Those kids left in kindergarten, they didn't get a lot of the early literacy skills. And so when they got to first grade, they were not hitting those benchmarks. And the action we took is we put all of our support into first grade. We took our interventionists and we really dug deep into that data and we went and changed, kept those first graders from sliding. So the benchmark got higher and we still are very close to where we were in the fall. So we didn't lose those first graders. Now we look at kindergarten and we have to shift our focus. So we're going to go back to, I'm already digging into all the kindergarten subtests and, and where we're falling short in kindergarten and we're going to now shift our focus over to kindergarten. And you can see the rest of the grades again, gray in the fall, blue in the winter with that shifting benchmark. Third grade is also where some really heavy informational reading comes in. So we're doing, we're doing okay. We're going to shift our focus. So let's take a look at growth instead of a benchmark. I'm going to explain this slide and then I have another one to show, a visual to show what, what this slide is telling us. So in 1920, before we left in March, so pre-pandemic time, we could say that our kindergarten and first grade students had an average of 19 points growth from fall to winter. This orange line here is what FastBridge says is their average growth. So nationally, it's about 15 points of growth from fall to winter. Well, we sat above that national norm of growth. This year, we're at about 14 points, and I can't see because this is in the way, 14.6. So we're still hovering around that average national growth. But this gray bar is the variability in the data. So what this means is most of our students grew between one and 20 points. Whereas this year, the variability in the growth was less. So technically, it's a standard deviation, but in general, it's the range of most of our students' growth. This is actually a visual that kind of explains that. On the left here, you're going to see all K and one students this year, their fall composite score and their winter composite score. So each little dot here is a student who got a 40 in the fall and then maybe got a 75 in the winter. So you can see that these are clustered here around this orange line. That orange line is that average 15 points growth. So if I got a 30 in the fall, I should have a 45 in the winter. That's the average. We're clustering between the average and this green dotted line, which is zero growth. So a 20 in the fall and a 20 in the winter. In the prior year, this was our growth and our cluster was a little bit above that orange line, which we saw on that previous slide. And you can see that variability is larger because we have more students here between the 15 and the zero. So that just explains like where all of our students are falling in relationship to the average growth. As far as our students in grades two through eight, 66% made growth in reading, 70% made growth in math. Now, what's misleading about this one is that green donut does not include the students who already hit the ceiling. So students who already hit what's called college pathway in the fall, maybe they get one wrong in the winter and their score goes down by one point, but they're still college pathway. Those kids are not included in this because it's not considered growth. Same with the blue is those are kids who scored higher the second time than the first time, but again, not including those kids who already met the ceiling. And I really wanted to include those kids because at the first slide, we had 68% meeting benchmark and 73% meeting benchmark in math. So in conclusion, we can say that eight out of 10 students in Lake Orion Community Schools in grades K through eight made growth or college pathway. And I think that is an outstanding measure. So a little bit of high school data that I can share with you. They don't do the nationally-normed assessments. And in the spring, they did not take the college board suite of assessments. So MDE made it optional for them to test in October of this school year. And I'm very happy to say that 75% of our students participated in the college board assessments. And that includes our special populations as well. So that was a huge turnout, even though it was considered optional. Our current freshmen took the PSAT nine because they didn't get to take it in eighth grade. And the mean score on that was a 965, which hovers right around what our normal mean is, which is down here. In last time they took it, in spring of 19, it was a 966. Our current sophomores, they didn't get to take PSAT nine, but they already took PSAT eight. So they took the PSAT 10. Normally, the mean score was a 968, I'm sorry, 989 in spring of 2019. This time, the mean score was a 1014. And also with the juniors, juniors actually normally take the NMSQT, which is for scholarship, National American Scholarship Information. They took that in the fall this year. And they had a mean score of 10, sorry, 1057, which is normally typically, I can use the word typically, a 1113. So again, major increases in our college board assessments. And then there's the SAT. So our juniors missed it. They had the opportunity to take it as a senior. Our current senior class had a mean score of a 1091. Typically, the year before that, it was a 1060. So interestingly, racking our brains, now this was not just unique to Lake Orion. Nationally, things, the mean score nationally was higher as well. What were the factors that led to such an increase in that average score? Number one, it was optional. Kids chose to take it. That changes their mindset. That changes their stress level. I truly believe this isn't documented anywhere, but students had more sleep than they've ever had since March. And we all know that the study on sleep is the benefits that that has, especially for our adolescents at the high school. It's no longer an element for college entrance and so kids didn't feel that pressure that they had to score high. So that was sort of a weight off their shoulders. They did have more time to utilize Khan Academy to get that practice in, that does the targeted practice. And from April to October, they, they did gain some more content that they normally wouldn't have before taking this assessment. So very impressed with our students and their college board assessment results. And just a reminder that our data is not a loss, that we are learning from it and that we are targeting resources, interventions, and moving forward to hit those targets. What will the spring data look like? Just like the last time, I always look forward to the next round to see what it all looks like. So I'm, I'm probably the only one who's super curious, but I'll see you again in the spring. That's what all I have.
Thank you, Missy. Questions for Missy about this important information?
Hey, Jim, I have a question. Um, so we talked about not lowering our standards, but yet at the same time, I heard some like national standard data come up. So does Lake Orion define for ourselves, like what our benchmarks are? Do we take this data from the FastBridge and say, okay, to be proficient or however we use that language? Does Lake Orion define that differently than maybe a district around us would define that? Could you speak to that a little bit?
We use the national standards that are created through mega data. But we do not compare that. I don't know that other districts around us have changed what benchmarks they're using.
Okay, and is, so is the FastBridge test for the K through eight students pretty much the standard for the state of Michigan? Or is that something you can choose and it's just what Lake Orion has chosen to?
Correct. There are several on the list of approved vendors for benchmark assessment data. We chose FastBridge and other districts around us also use FastBridge. But there's also NWEA and I Ready and there's a whole list, about five you can choose from.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, I was just curious on that. Okay, so we do use the national, what would be considered the national standards? And that's what we're sticking to. We're not adjusting that at any level. Okay, awesome. Thank you.
No, and what I was referring to, Danielle, is we have to, we had to report to the state this year our goals and tracking our data. And that's where you could, as a district, set your, wherever you set your bar, that was up to the district. So what I was trying to explain is we did not lower our bar due to COVID. So we submitted to the state what we would, as if COVID was not here.
Okay, but we did, I mean, we could have lowered our bar, but as a district, we chose that, that was not our plan. That was not the best interest of students.
No.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Yes, Bergen?
Hey, good evening, Missy. Thank you for being with us tonight and for all your hard work in putting this presentation together. Appreciate, and I was very much looking forward to it because I was very curious to see where we, where we stand on things. I have a couple of questions for you and hoping you can clarify some things. Was it possible to note, or does it even matter, which students were in person and which were on Dragon Virtual?
So that was one of the things that we were looking at trying to do, but because the amount of time that we were remote versus the time that Dragon Virtual kids were in Dragon Virtual, it was basically the same, maybe with a two-week difference. So that'll be a good thing to look at next year or maybe even at the end of the year, depending on how long our kids are in person. But it wasn't enough of a difference to statistically make it worth diving into.
Okay. And so my thought process along the lines of the emphasis here tonight that we're not changing our academic standards per se, our benchmarks. Is that true up until the point of time in this test, this, this assessment? And are we carrying that through for the rest of the year or are we changing the curriculum maps at all and any kind of adjustment for the remainder of the year?
Well, we're not changing the benchmarks. No, no, that, those are two very, very different things. The curriculum map, yeah, the curriculum maps have, of course, they've had to have been adjusted because of what we've been dealing with. So yes, those have been adjusted, adjusted. But our targets on where we want our kids performing, no, have not changed.
Can you or Missy define that a little bit better for us, the curriculum map and what it means to adjust those?
Basically, what you're doing is you're looking over the whole curriculum map, picking out the benchmarks or the concepts that may come around another time, right? So those that do that, we can, we can save a little bit of time and shrink those down. Other times, there are things that we know that are going to be hit again in the next grade. So again, we might be able to reduce that a little bit. We take a look at what are the necessary building blocks that a student has to have in one grade to be sure that they have as a foundation for the next grade. So that's how it's looked at, by grade level, by content, by benchmark.
And in, in creating that that balance then for the, for the staff, for the teachers who are implementing the changes, does that impact the following year, your curriculum map changes?
It will to a certain extent. We, we've tried to adjust them so that, again, we're not creating our own gap, right? We know that next year, we'll probably have to do some little adjusting, you know, on the front end as well. But we also have summer and we have the remainder of the year. So we'll have to see, you know, we'll have to see how far we get. I remain hopeful. Our teachers, our students, our parents are not, you know, are certainly partners as well in this. And we are showing that, that we are, we are growing our students and our students are achieving. And for those that are having struggles, as Missy had pointed out, we are digging deep into that data and making sure that those students have the interventions that they need.
I have one more clarifying question for, I don't know if anybody else had the same thought. And Danielle, I know you have the teaching history, teaching background, not teaching history. But when you, when Missy showed us meeting the reading benchmarks and, and from other places, I hear a term called reading at grade level. Is there, can you differentiate that for me? Can you be meeting the reading benchmarks and not? Is there, can you differentiate that for me? Can you be meeting the reading benchmarks and not be at reading grade level?
I think they go hand in hand. And we do also have, um, we have a couple of other assessments to help us if, the thing about it is, on the FastBridge assessments, um, that's one moment in time, right? So if a student is sick, has a bad day, um, you know, what have you, we have a couple of other measures to kind of look at a student over more more information. So um I I would say that with this screener result, you, it could be a false positive, but we do have other information to help us determine if a child is on grade level.
Thank you.
Thank you, Burgett. Other questions for Missy and Heidi? Yes, Jake.
Hello, um, I had some questions about the kindergarten and first grade reading, that it was nice to see the second through eighth grade had maintained where they were in prior years. But you talked about the deployment of resources towards first grade and then again towards kindergarten.
Correct.
So the question for, as a board member is, is there a need for more resources? Because the concern that I would have is in prior years, when we were at those levels, we were still doing interventions for students in second through fifth grade. But if we take all the resources and put them towards kindergarten and first grade, are those struggling students at those grade levels still getting interventions? And then I I heard you say something about we're we're targeting towards kindergarten. Does that mean we're pulling them off first grade because our first grade mid-year scores were still not what we would want them to be? So can you explain the 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 amount in deployment of interventionists?
Missy, I can take that since that's kind of my, since the interventionists kind of fall under what I, part of my um job. So we always look at this data three times a year, and we always look at and see where is our biggest need, right? This year, we knew our biggest need was in first grade, so we purposely took our kindergarten interventionists and asked them to help out in first grade. We knew that kindergartners learning in a remote setting is difficult. It's difficult to keep them engaged, all of those things that having the intervention in a remote setting probably wasn't the best route for kindergarten. So we thought this is, our first graders need the help. We knew that. So we did that. Um, every year, our fourth and fifth graders, we look at interventions if we have room, because with the third grade reading legislation, we have to make sure our kids are reading by this, by the end of grade three, right? So as a district, we always hit our K three as hard as we can. And um that's no different than any other year. And we did that. We actually had, we did have to take some of our um two, three interventionists, our four, five. They also had to help in first grade this year, just for the simple fact that it, you're in a remote setting, we had to have them push in more. Um, so every year, we look at this, and this is no different. We looked at the data, we were pretty sure this is what the data was going to show us MOY. Um, so Julie Gutman, part of her special ed funding pays for our kindergarten interventionists. So we had to, per that grant, make sure that those kindergarten interventionists were back in kindergarten, which we knew is the right thing to do because we don't want those, that gap created again. Our our, I think what I I think about this data and what Missy showed is that our intervention programs are working when we have kids in person, not that they're not working now, but they really work when we have kids in person, right? We can really make sure that those kids are getting, who need that extra support are getting the extra support. So it's really no different. We look at the data and we deploy them as best we can where we need, where we need them. Um, and it's, and it's sometimes it's by school. Sometimes a third grade at one building needs more support, and we have to take it from fourth or fifth, or sometimes maybe we look at in fifth grade, or they have data needs, and we we make sure that those kids are supported. So I don't feel like we've missed any kids in supporting them. Um, and we also were, we were in the process of hiring an LSS for Dragon Virtual, an interventionist just for Dragon Virtual as well, to make sure, that's another component we've had to include this year, is making sure all of our interventionists who are currently in person have a Dragon Virtual Intervention Group. So we also are getting a new Dragon Virtual Interventionist to help support that program as well, because that's a new component that we've never had to deal with before. Um, so honestly, Jake, I really feel like this is just normal for us. We we deploy our our needs based on the data that Missy shares with us, and we go through it with every building, and where do you need it the most? Who needs to help? So I I feel like we're, you know, she said we were redeploying them to kindergarten, we are, but we're still heavily in first grade too, because our our first graders aren't ready to just not have as much support as we were giving them.
Yeah, I mean, that, and it more so, the question too was just to give you a chance to explain that to everybody. Because we're not, knowing we're not static. And then the next question does go out to say, as we, as you, the cabinet and administrators build up a budget, you know, making sure that whatever your priorities are, you know, bring those, bringing those to the board to say, we'd like to shift resources from this program towards that program, and we're always open to hearing those ideas that you have, because we want to make sure that the money that we get, we're we're spending it in in the most effective way to educate students.
Yeah, I think that's one thing Lake Orion does really well regarding intervention support, um, like no other district that I know, and how we, how we deploy our interventionists. I um and honestly, that none of that hits the general fund. That's all grant money that um for K, K through twelve, that we have our interventionist, our LSS staff is all funded by grant money. So I think that that's really impressive that we're, then, because you don't have to use your money for that, right? Like, you can buy programs and do things with it, but as a district, we've decided that it's the people working with the kids that give us the most bang for our buck. So that's where we, as a district, choose to spend the money. And I think that that we should be applauded for that, because it's not like that in every district. A lot of places will just purchase a program, give it to the teachers, and say, do the intervention on your own, and we don't do that here.
Great. Thanks for the explanations.
Thanks, Jake. Other questions? Yes, Danielle.
Sorry, I just kind of had a follow-up question. We came back to intervention. On the um slide Missy showed with um that displayed the kindergarten, yeah, I don't want to say lost, but the gap, I guess, from the fall till now, um, of course, that kind of got focused on because that looked pretty dramatic, but I also noticed there was a more significant gap than other grades in the eighth grade as well. Has that, you know, do we have any thoughts or data on why that may have happened? And are we employing some intervention services going in that direction, considering those kids are moving up to the high school next year? And it's a whole different level at that point.
So it's hard, um, with two, second grade through eighth grade, they took those assessments, uh, computer adaptive assessments at home. So it's really hard to know if that information was a true positive. Um, so what, what we need to do now is you dig into the eighth grade teachers and their common assessment data, and that's going to help explain um a little bit of where we are that is more valid than possibly these computer adaptive assessments. So uh, we can definitely dig deeper into that and see. Because, yeah, anything that's two through eight, the gap isn't necessarily well-defined. K and one, those were teacher-administered assessments. We brought kids in personally to do those, so we know those are valid. Um, but we can definitely dig deeper into the other, other grade levels with more data and.
But Danielle, we do have interventionists at the middle level, so, and they do work with sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students.
Okay, awesome.
And curriculum support classes.
Right. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Now's the time. While you're formulating your questions, I did have a question. In terms of um adjustments to uh the standards that we've established for uh the district, I've spoken with uh people in other districts where each person has told me they've made adjustments in their standards uh within the framework of the dealing with this virus. How, how uh unique, how uh limited, can you kind of frame how few districts have not made adjustments and have stuck with the plan? That's for anybody, I guess.
I honestly don't know district by district, but I think it is more common to adjust than to not.
Right. And 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 that's the feeling I got in talking with people in three different districts. They've said they've made adjustments. And uh, yeah, it's it's really good news to hear that we have not.
And I can give it, I can give an example, I guess. Um, the example would be kindergarten, right? When we set the kindergarten, we said our kindergartners would grow fifteen points from the beginning of the year to um middle of the year. Missy showed you that we grew fourteen point six points, right? So we're close, but we used it based on the national norms. We could have said our kindergartners will grow one point, and the state would have been fine with that. But we chose as a district not to change that. We wanted to continue with what our national norms were and what we know as a district, we typically grow, because we want our standards to be high for our students. We didn't want to change that, even though they're in a remote setting. We have belief that our teachers can do it, and they are doing it. They're, they're, these kids are growing every single day, and in more ways than we could have probably ever thought they would.
Um, I can point on another advantage um to not lowering them is that if the waiver for state testing is not granted, I guarantee you that the state of Michigan did not lower their standards, and they will be given the same state assessment that they're normally given. And so we're on track to still meet that standard as opposed to lowering it, so.
Well, I think it's important that uh the community realizes we have not compromised our standards in spite of the challenges that we've been facing. And uh unlike, I believe, a number of other districts, we've, we've stepped up and continued to to hold those standards high. And uh that's really what the expectation should be by our parents, by our staff, and and by our administration, so uh that's greatly appreciated. Yes, Scott?
Missy, I'd just like to say, I I truly appreciate um you pointing out the the outside-the-classroom learning that's happening um with the students. I think it's, it's, it's huge, it's important. I think that there's a lot of things that we, as parents, that are super involved with our kids um maybe take for granted, where some kids that don't have parents that are as involved have learned a lot of valuable, valuable things, and and I appreciate that.
If only we could measure those things.
Yes, Burgett.
Um, Missy, you touched on this, and I don't know if you guys are going to be able to answer this, but it, should the state waive the spring testing? When would you expect to hear that? I know you were hoping to hear that already, but like, when, when is the last draw, so to speak, for that?
Um, they're taking public comment on the waiver uh up until February seventeenth, I believe. Um, and then after February seventeenth, they really didn't say what their timeline was. So anybody can do the public comment for the testing, and um we'll see how it goes. Fingers crossed. But I'm moving forward as if we are. There's a lot of work that has to be done prior to the seventeenth, like all the, all the work on the backend, so I'm still moving forward as if we are.
Yeah, and that, that's how we will continue to move forward. I will tell you, I'm, I'm losing hope uh because our WE, our WEADA testing has already, has already started. So not that they won't, you know, say that we're not going to M test, M step test this year, but I would think that that decision would have been made, and the WEADA testing then would have not taken place. Um, how, but you know what? Weirder things have happened. Um, I was just hoping that the decision would be made prior to, so that it would include um the WEADA test as well, but that's not the case. We have kids right now, we're, we're in the middle of WEADA testing.
Yeah. What is WEADA testing?
I'm sorry, um, students with a second language have to take a, have to take a test. So that's, that's, it's called the WEADA, so they test the WEADA.
And we are proceeding as as if all assessments and accountability are going to be in place at the state and the federal level, and um, if if they're not, then we'll adjust, but at this point, we're moving forward in that manner.
Great. Other questions, comments? Last call. Thank you, Missy, for all your good work. Carrie, thank you, and uh uh, keep moving forward.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. All right, so.
Bye.
Thank you. So we'll move on to Dragon Virtual Programming.
All right, great, thanks. So
Please.
Yeah, through the, through the pandemic, we've continued to adjust the, you know, the Dragon Virtual Program, and it's something that we know needs to sustain over time. And um, one of the things that you're going to recognize here tonight, that it has some real unique qualities as we move forward with the program um that will not only support our students, but set us apart from other districts. Um, Heidi and the team that's here, and as well as uh many others behind the scene, uh have put in lots of work, um creativity, to try to make uh this program outstanding. So um, I guess I'll turn it over to you, Heidi, if there's any intros for uh for the presentation. Thanks.
Yes, all right, thank you. And this evening, we will be uh presenting on our Dragon Virtual Program for um fall twenty twenty-one. And so we do have several people that are with us this evening who have really been working on the development of this program. Uh, we have Nick Cosia uh with us, who is our Dragon Virtual Coordinator. Um, so he will be presenting all the way through, along with um Carrie Anderson, our Director of Curriculum, who has been working at the elementary level uh with this program. And we have our middle school principals, we have Sarah Manzo, uh Dr. Haas and Dr. Groya. And then we also have, from the high school, uh Steve Holly and Tony Palmieri, as well as uh Kristen Slawinski from Learning Options. So we are going to uh go through each of the uh levels, the Dragon Virtual Program. So I think, Nick, you have the PowerPoint you want to start, and I think I'm the first slide, actually. All right, thank you. I will say that all of this information will be posted on the website. Um, so you'll be able to refer to that as well. And to kick off, I think the main point that I want to be sure that people understand is that there will be some differences, obviously, from the Dragon Virtual Program that we're currently running to the one that you are going to see that will run in the fall. I want to remind everybody that the Dragon Virtual Program that we are running currently, we developed in a reactive mode to the pandemic, which is not where you want to be. You always want to be proactive. Uh, that was not the case with this particular um situation. So when you're developing things in a reactive um state, it sometimes can, not sometimes, it does pose problems. For example, we had already had all of our students scheduled for the fall um and before developing um this program. So it was taking those schedules and now trying to fit it into a program, whereas this fall, the schedules will be done ahead of time, and we will know how many students will want Dragon Virtual, how many students will want our traditional program. So it's, it's a very different um situation, and I think that's important to make sure that we understand um that we actually now get to be in the proactive seat and develop the program how we think that it should be developed. We were really under some major constraints um due to the pandemic uh this year, so I do want to point that out. All along the way, we have been uh developing um our staff and best practices uh for virtual um instruction that will continue to happen. We've gone through, we've studied our current uh Dragon Virtual Programs. What are the benefits? What are the weaknesses? What are the things that we can improve? We've looked at what other districts um are offering as well. We have gathered feedback from parents, students, and staff several times along the way, and this information has been incredibly valuable as we work to build this new program. And then, as Ben had pointed out, I do think that this virtual program pulls out the best elements of virtual formats. Um, and to make sure that we are. and to make sure that we are meeting the needs of all of our students. And it's that, I think it is that real balance between allowing the students to have independence, but also making sure that our students are supported as well. So with that, Nick will kick off and we will start with the elementary.
Thanks, Heidi. And I just want to say thank you to everybody that's really helped along the way with this. Like Heidi said, this has been a learning process for a lot of us. And you know, our response to the pandemic here was, we've had our ups and downs. But you know, thanks go out to the staff for rolling with the punches, the parents, the students for being patient and all the support from the admin here. It's been quite a ride. So it's a blessing right now to work on something and be proactive and look forward to next year. So at the elementary level, we've been having a lot of really nice success with our current program. And after gathering all the feedback from our parents and our students and our staff, we've really come to realize that the Dragon Virtual Program at the elementary level is working and it's working very well and it will continue to look like that into the 21, 22 school year. We will continue to use our LOCs curriculum and it's going to align directly with what our in-person students are, will be doing at the same time. We're going to provide that direct instruction through our core and specials taught by our LOCs teachers. We'll continue to utilize Seesaw and Zoom for live meetings. And that daily schedule, that's really going to mirror what we're doing right now. Our students are logging on in the mornings. They're typically having a morning meeting and they're working through their day as if they were right there in the classroom. It's just through a screen. So those daily virtual class meetings will incorporate some of the asynchronous learning because especially when we consider our younger learners, that screen time does tend to become a concern. So you know, we want to flex those opportunities to provide some asynchronous learning away from the computer screen, give kids a chance to unplug for just a minute, continue to do their work, but then gather them back later on in the class period. Along with that, we're going to continue to record our core instruction and post that for Seesaw for students who have absences or you know, are sick for whatever reason. Again, we're trying to flex that flexibility piece with Dragon Virtual and still allowing for our students to stay current. For technology, we're going to continue to provide those district devices as we have this year. We've got the computers out there. We've got Wi-Fi hotspots. We're really making it work. Our K-2 students are on iPads. Our 3-5 students are with the actual laptop computers. And then another thing that we're going to incorporate more next year, hopefully, post-pandemic, students will continue to be eligible and encouraged to participate in those extracurricular activities. Those are going to be beyond the school day and our students will be assigned to their neighborhood school. So they'll participate in any of those activities that are taking place at their neighborhood school. We haven't really been able to provide that this year with the close interaction, but you know, we're really looking forward to that next year. So the students have that social aspect built into the DV format here. Some of the things that we've started to develop, we've learned along the way are our program expectations for Dragon Virtual students. This year has been, like we've said all along, it's been a learning experience and we've tried to be flexible for our families because they all have unique needs. But we want to develop those expectations for our students. Because again, we're going to be out of the pandemic. We want this to be a best-case scenario for our students. We want them to be in a learning environment that's going to be beneficial for them. So we're going to require students to come in periodically for our designated state assessments. We may have them come in for in-person assessments periodically for our local assessments as well. And a point of contention here, this is actually something that we have to be very explicit about. Cameras need to be on when participating during live instruction. It's worse as we get up into our older students just feeling like they can be present in front of the computer, but the camera off. But we're actually going to be requiring that next year. We need to be actually seeing our students and knowing that they're attending and present for that lesson. Attendance will be required. We want our students there for that live instruction. Again, we're going to incorporate the recorded lessons, but this is school. We're outside of the pandemic. Hopefully, we want them there in real time. So our teachers can really give them the best of their teaching. We want them turning in those daily assignments and we are really going to lean on that two-way communication. We know that the communication piece in particular is not the same over a computer. Teachers don't have the opportunity to just make those snap judgments that they would normally in the classroom. So we really need our students plugged in and communicating with their teachers and making sure that everybody's just having that open dialogue on a regular basis. Another element, and sort of along those lines, is the student fit for Dragon Virtual. We opened the floodgates here this year. We knew that we were going to have a lot of students. There was obviously the risk of COVID, so we opened it up and we took everybody and we wanted it to be a safe learning environment for our students. As we shift towards providing the best opportune learning environment for our students outside of the pandemic, we can start to focus on the qualities of our students that really work well in this particular learning environment. And we're looking for students that are self-motivated, disciplined, they have that time management aspect. And granted, we are talking about our elementary students here, so we're going to, we'll take this by level, but computer literates, willing participant. We're looking for our students, like I said before, to roll with our punch, roll with the punches, be task-oriented. And you know, and I spoke to this just a second ago, but for our elementary students, especially our younger ones, if Dragon Virtual is the option that our families go with in the fall, it would be recommended that parents of our younger students, our K-2, possibly third-grade students, are involved in that daily instruction. Just so we know that our students are attending, we know that they're not running into those computer issues. They're not as independent as our older learners. We will, of course, continue to provide support services for our students, special education and 504s. We will continue to service those students, any student with an IEP or 504. They'll continue to have those plans to address their individual needs and we're going to adapt those to be unique to the virtual learning environment. Our special ed teams will adjust the schedules. They'll continue to add supports and they're really going to do that on a case-by-case basis, unique to the virtual learning environment because student needs are going to change from in-person to virtual learning. We'll also continue to qualify our students with English learners, continue to be supported by certified LCS-EL teachers. And we spoke to this a little bit earlier during Missy's presentation, but we're going to continue to offer those LSS support services with our LO interventionists. That's, you know, if we learned anything this year, the support that our LSS staff are providing is paramount. It's crucial to helping bring along those students that are struggling during this iteration of Dragon Virtual in the pandemic. We'll continue to offer that next year. So the Dragon Virtual Program requirements at the elementary level, we're going to continue to offer a K through five. We're not going to offer it in developmental kindergarten for next year. The class sizes, this has been a point of contention for this year, and we appreciate our parents staying positive with this. You know, we're in the middle of a pandemic. It puts a crunch on us. But we're going to offer class sizes that will be similar to in-person sections next year. Now that we have the ability to plan and schedule ahead of time, we're not being reactive, as Ms. Mercer said. We're going to be able to keep those class section sizes similar to those in-person sections. And then as we start to fill those sections in our registration, that's going to be coming up here in the spring, registration over the cap at each grade level will maybe add into a waitlist. So we're not going to just deny students until we get to that next level, but we want to at least provide an opportunity that if students continue to register, we may be able to develop another section of, let's say, first grade. And before just, you know, saying we're capping it at 25 students at this grade level and calling it there. So we'll have a waitlist. The commitment that we're asking out of our families is that students will be asked to commit to that full school year. Returning to in-person learning from Dragon Virtual will require administrative approval. We want to communicate that the choice to go Dragon Virtual is in the best interest of student learning and achievement. Again, we're outside of the pandemic. This is what we're thinking. If virtual learning is the option for your child, great, commit to it through the full school year. And we want the idea to be that you're making this commitment because it's what's best for your child and their learning, not because it's convenient, not because it's easier, but because it's best for their learning. So we're asking for that full year of commitment, knowing that this is what's best for my child. And then returning from, if it's not working out, we can definitely, we can open that dialogue. We can return students to in-person if it's not working out. But we're looking for that administrative approval to return to in-person if that's a request. If a student enrollment is minimal, so if we don't meet those minimum required numbers to formulate a section of core or any specials, those may be taught by a third party or may not run at all. So we have those lower thresholds where we can viably run a section. And if we may not hit them, we may not have to, may not end up running that section or we may end up using one of our third-party partners to maintain that section. As far as next steps for elementary, the student DV selection will take place from May 3rd to the 7th and it's going to be online registration. Parents will be sending out information as we approach that date. Beyond that, Dragon Virtual Student and Staff Assignment will take place shortly after that timeframe. We'll continue to provide professional development for our staff and you know, we'll be able to target that a little bit more now that we are again, being proactive. So we'll be able to be a little bit more selective and provide some better professional development as we move forward through the process. And then students will receive their teacher assignment in August, during that same timeframe as in-person students. Before we get to middle level, and I'm happy to take questions on anything from the elementary presentation here.
All right, questions for Nick? Yes, Steve, please. Steve, you're muted.
I can't hear him if he's talking.
Oh, there you go. I think you're, there you go.
Thank you, Jim. Mr. Cosia, good evening. Welcome. Thank you for your presentation. From what I'm hearing from you, sir, planning is the key here in the registration to move on.
Absolutely, yes.
Healthy environment. However, from this year, from what I understand, Mr. Cosia or Nicholas, is the fact that we've learned a lot from Dragon Virtual and we're just going to add on to it with excellent results, correct?
That's correct. At the elementary level, we've had some great success and our parents and students and staff have all communicated that.
And the responses very well. Thank you, Nick, and sorry for the, I've got some computer issues here and I thank you.
That's all right. 2021.
Thank you, Steve. Are there other questions? And I'd ask you just to speak up. I can't see all of you with the display up.
Hey, Jim, this is Bergen. I have questions for Nick. Hi, good evening, Nick. Welcome to our meeting. Thanks for being here. Earlier on in your presentation, you stated that this is going to be the grand curriculum and all the grand instruction. Can you clarify for me and for anyone listening, the piece where if student enrollment is minimal, core and/or specials may be taught by a third party? Where's our line? Can you be a little more specific?
We don't have an actual, it's very hard to determine a number because again, this is going to be, at the elementary level, we do plan to do across district like we did this past year. So there's not a hard set number that we would be looking at at this point in time.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions?
Hi, this is Danielle. I have a quick question as well.
Please.
So they, you know, you talked about having a potential waitlist for kids if we have over a certain amount. So what does planning look like right now? Are we hoping to have one, at least one class run? Is that what we're planning for right now? And then if we go above and beyond that, we look at adding a second, a third, whatever that looks like? Just curious on how many you're currently planning on having or hoping to have, you know, at least initially.
That's, yes, that is what we're planning on having is one section per grade level. That's kind of like our shot in the dark, right? Depending upon the numbers, right? Again, this is, you know, all dependent upon the scheduling process and who registers for Dragon Virtual, but that is kind of our target. One section per grade level. And then that's where Nick was explaining, if we went over that, if we have enough for two sections, we'll run two sections. You know, if we get two and you know, we're, you know, two sections full, but then maybe only, let's say 10, we have 10, you know, for a third grade for another section, that's where we would have to, you know, take a waitlist for those 10. We also have to, as you know, we're talking about schools of choice at our February 24th meeting. That also plays into this, that we'll be discussing that at that meeting as well. So there's a lot of factors that are going into play here, but that's what we're shooting for. And we really hope to, if this is really a choice for our families and this is what our families want, we want to make sure that they get in the program if at all possible. So we'll be as creative as we possibly can be.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions?
I have a question. Hey, Heidi, are we looking at schools of choice or any outside people being able to do this? Or is this just for our kids right now?
No, it will be. And again, this is where the boards, we're going to have to talk about, you know, schools of choice. You know that we have a threshold in person. Now we're going to have to talk about a threshold of schools of choice for Dragon Virtual. So we'll talk about that on the 24th, but as a district, we can have on our schools of choice application, we can, in fact, this is what we intend to do, is that our schools of choice, students will need to choose whether they are wanting the in-person program or whether they are wanting the Dragon Virtual Program. They cannot choose both. Once they make that choice, for that year, they have to commit to that choice. If they want to switch the next year, they have to apply schools of choice for that particular program. That will help us out greatly, honestly, that kind of flexibility. And I think I said at the last board meeting, or maybe it was the Board Curriculum Committee meeting, that I mentioned that I was having a meeting, several of us had met with Carolyn Claire-Hout from Oakland Schools, who is the specialist there in accounting, school accounting. And so we've determined, like I said, that we can do schools of choice and you can do by program. So that is great news.
We have some thoughts, Scott, and we've talked about what it would take to be cost-neutral in the program and that for numbers and what potentials this bring. And we're looking forward to talking about that more on the 20. potentials this bring. And, and we're looking forward to talking about that more on the 24th, if that helps with what you're saying.
Yes, I guess I was kind of going down the same path of what Burgett was saying as far as if opening that up to schools of choice gives more of our kids a chance to where it gets it above where it's actually two sections instead of 1.75 sections. So it's something is available for our kids, then, you know, to me, that's a no-brainer. But so I guess I was just thinking out loud.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
I think another comment is, sorry, this is Rick, that should be made, the reason for the commitment. It creates a staffing issue and it creates a class size issue if halfway through the school year, 15 first grade students decide they want to make a change and go back to an in-person setting and our in-person sections are such that we're at or near our class limitations, we wouldn't have room to advance those kids back into a, uh, in-person setting. So that creates a dilemma with sections and numbers. So there truly needs to be a commitment for the year either way. Same thing with students that are in person who maybe halfway through the year decide they would like to go virtual. We may not have room for additional students in a virtual setting. And we're not about creating and developing new sections, either in-person or virtually mid-year.
This is, hi guys, this is Susan. Hi, good evening. Uh, first, Nick, thank you for all you guys' hard work on putting together a program. I'm sure this is going to be a great addition to our, our school system to offer to everyone. My question is around, and I know you said that the students that choose Dragon Virtual would be able to come for extracurricular activities to the school. Have you guys considered having office hours for some in-person time with the teachers or, um, maybe even a, a hybrid type of schedule where they're in-person for a day and remote other days, something like that? Did you consider anything of that nature?
Heidi, you muted yourself.
Sorry. Sorry, Susan, I can speak to that. At this point, we're not considering the hybrid for next year. That is something we may consider down the road. Again, it's making sure that we get a quality program off the, off the ground first. Um, and it is virtual, so that's, that's kind of the whole idea at this point, not to say that someday we would not offer a hybrid because this is a program, I'm going to tell you, it will probably look different again the following year. And that's, that's great. It's more choices, more options, but not for next year. Um, and then there will be, yes, times that, um, we will work with the teachers to maybe, um, do some social emotional gatherings, um, some activities just for their Dragon Virtual as well. So that's something else that we're, we're thinking as part of this program where, you know, certainly the, the school building will have their activities, but then we're also looking at, you know, what, what activities that we can specifically have for Dragon Virtual to build that community with this group of students as well.
Great. Thank you.
Other questions?
Hi there, I've got a, this is Jake. I have a, a few. Heidi, you used some terminology when you were talking about the Oakland Schools thing, um, that I, that I didn't understand. It sounded like if we, if a student, either school of choice or local chooses to be Dragon Virtual or that, that counts as like assigning them to a school, i- i- is that the understanding? Like a, a student that lives in our district, that's in the, that's in the Pink Creek area, their option is to go to Pink Creek. So if a student, if a family commits to Dragon Virtual for the year, we don't, and they're a resident student. Would we have to accept, they, they said, well, I live in the district. I live in the Pink Creek area. I want out of Dragon Virtual and back into Pink Creek. Are we able to deny them that switch?
Technically, yes.
Okay. And then the school of choice, if, wh- wh- what it sounded like I was hearing, if they sign up for Dragon through school of choice for Dragon Virtual, that becomes their assigned school. If they want to switch schools, they would have to reapply.
Correct.
Or come in person because essentially Dragon Virtual at the elementary level is, it, but they're assigned to a school. I guess that's where I get confused. Like, okay, you're assigned to a school as a school of choice kid, but you're Dragon Virtual.
And that's, that's where we'll have to work that out. They will be assigned a school just for activity purposes. So it's going to operate a little bit differently than what we do now.
Okay.
Um, because Dragon Virtual will be considered for schools of choice. Kind of, it will be like a separate program. So they either got to choose Dragon Virtual or in-person. If they choose Dragon Virtual, we will tie them to a building so that they also have the opportunity to participate in after-school activities.
Okay. A, a question I had about registration over the cap. So let's say we, it's capped at 25 or 27 for a particular grade level and we have 32. Is preference going to be given to students who were already Dragon Virtual this year?
We have not made, I, I, we have not made that determination, honestly.
Okay, because I was wondering.
Or we have done a lottery in the past. Again, we're going to do our best to try to accommodate all of our, all of our families, but in the past, the way that we have handled those types of things as a lottery.
Okay, um. And when will the decision for third-party be made? And will families have any ability to change their decision if they said, well, I signed up for it because it was an LOCS teacher? If it's going third-party, I would prefer to come in person. Are they going to be given that flexibility when they do this May 3rd to 7th registration?
For core teachers, yes. If it is for electives, then no. And I really do not see that, 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 I mean, we are trying to avoid that at all costs. We really do not think that that will happen. But we felt that we needed to be transparent and put it out there. But we really do not, we really do not think that that is likely. But if that were the case, then yes, I, then parents would have, we would communicate that to parents, especially if it were the core teacher. If it's electives, then, you know, no. Um, but if it's core, then absolutely, that's only fair.
Sounds fair. And then we mentioned, I was trying to understand if a grade level got dropped from Dragon Virtual, yeah, I, I thought that that might have been a term that, that you used, Nick, when we were talking about going third-party if we don't have the staffing level and there could be a circumstance. It, I guess that, that brings into a question the, how do I say, the long-term viability of the program. So if we're missing a grade level or two, you could have that group of, you know, the class of 2023 or 2033 doesn't have a slot in Dragon Virtual going through, but potentially their siblings do. So how, how do you see all that fitting together?
And, and honestly, that could happen. I mean, if the numbers were so low, it would just wouldn't economically make sense. And honestly, we do that now, if you really think about it. With our, with our classes at the secondary level. If we don't have enough to run them, then we don't run them. So that's, I mean, that would be the, that would be the same line of thinking. We have to hit a certain number in order for it to be economically, you know, wise.
Well, and Jake, I think you bring up a, a good point. Um, you know, for families that are going to choose the virtual option at the elementary level, having one child in virtual and one child out doesn't necessarily make sense. And, and just like we would revisit a, a parent's decision to to stay in the virtual program if, if we knew that we couldn't offer a section with our LOCS teachers for the core content. Again, that's, you know, it's highly unlikely, but I think we could offer that same sort of review for our parents if, if there was a, a case where one child would have that virtual section and one child wouldn't have that virtual section. To me, that seems, you know, it, it, it doesn't seem fair for, you know, one kid to be there and one kid not. So parents, we could revisit those sorts of decisions too.
Yeah, but you, we also have to remember, hopefully parents are making this decision based on their child. So there could be one kid that's a Dragon Virtual and maybe another kid that's in-person. It really, the decision really needs to be made by the particular student.
Yeah.
With the, with the registration data being in May, it gives us a lot of opportunities to make decisions, gives us lots of opportunities to communicate, gives families opportunities to adjust if it's not what they, uh, anticipated. And then the other thing is, is we got to think forward. I think a lot of times when we're looking at this, we're thinking about our current environment and we're talking about the environment moving forward. So people are going to be choosing Dragon Virtual because their, their student recognized, their family recognized that this, they can excel in this type of a program. Not that they need to be in this type of a program for a health reason. So I guess kind of keep that in mind too, as we, um, you know, think through this. This is about moving forward and making this a program to sustain over time.
And then the, the final question I had, uh, I brought this up in Curriculum Committee, but I did present it to, to you, Ben. So this is, i- it makes most sense to discuss this here at the elementary level. So the question that was, as it was phrased, uh, by, by Danielle, she, a good way, that we get 20-something students, but it's four from Pink Creek and five from Stadium and, and three from Blanche Sims. We'll be hiring an LO, we'll be having an LOCS teacher assigned to that, but taking away four kids, five kids, three kids from each of the six neighborhood schools, that doesn't necessarily reduce the number of class offerings we need to offer in those buildings. So the concern is that, you know, the budget impact of having to add staffing, you know, to maintain a higher staffing level to, to service the same number of students that, that we would otherwise have. So I just wanted to get your thoughts about how that would, how, how that'll all shake out. And that was more towards Ben or Rick or, or John?
Jake, I think like, like anything else, we're making assumptions at this point. And we're making assumptions based on where we currently are in the environment that we're in. And the assumption is even when we return to an in-person environment in a full-time capacity, and hopefully for sure that will be in the fall of this next school year, that there will still be some level, for whatever reason, that individuals may choose a virtual setting. Because they experienced it and found success or because they're still concerned or whatever. We have no real idea what those numbers will look like. And until we really get a, a, a better grasp on those numbers, the planning that is going on is, is, as was alluded to earlier, is based on a, a certain level. If, I think if you truly ask what we think the, uh, the interest level will be at the elementary, it will probably be pretty low. We're hoping to be able to provide at least one section per grade level. It may be higher than that. It may be lower than that. Just like we do every year with the number of sections that we have to present per grade level. Those are not determined until June, sometimes July, till we know really what the registration is and what our staffing needs will be. So there's a lot of these decisions that we'll, we'll not be able to make until June or July, based on the level of interest, based on our enrollment at the time. So it's a crapshoot at this point. What we hope to do is put together a quality program that we can advertise, that people would understand, this is what it will look like. So I do have some options to choose from. But again, we can't, we can't, uh, give uh, emphatic answers at this point of what it would look like, what availability will look like. We do have a window that we're required. Unless we choose to be a schools of choice that is open all year long, which I get a very strong feeling from this, uh, board, from previous boards, that's not our interest. We always opt for a window of time for people to apply. That helps us with planning. Again, lots of moving parts, very hard to put, put an exact number and staffing to it at this point. There, there's going to have to be some level of trust in our predictability and our, our ability to provide a program. And as Heidi said, we're hoping that this will grow over time. We, we put together a quality program. We're doing something unique that other places are not doing with virtual, especially at the elementary, and it would be a draw. And then maybe a year from now, we look at the schools of choice for a virtual program and consider whether we want to expand it or not.
And keep in mind, the board will have the opportunity to approve a budget and then our team will be, um, tasked with the responsibility of fitting within that budget. So, you know, we do feel comfortable and, you know, confident that, that we can work in the parameters given by the board and, and that's how we'll proceed.
I think we could have a, a more in-depth conversation about this at our workshop as well. Because there are implications for schools of choice. And, uh, when a, a seat opens in a building that may create an opportunity for a schools of choice seat, thereby offsetting some concerns, uh, financial concerns for staffing issues. So I think there are a lot, as Rick said, there are a lot of moving parts. This is essentially a startup activity. And, uh, we'll all need to take a good look at it and also we'll all need to remain flexible and, uh, kind of think outside the box. I think Susan had her hand up. Yes.
Do. One quick clarifying question, Heidi. With regards to the third-party provider, if we do have a situation where we go into that, are those third-party providers, is that going to be still live instruction or would it be recorded instruction?
No, that, that would be, that would be, um, asynchronous.
Okay.
Well, at the elementary level, potentially it could be live, not at the middle level, but at the elementary level, if we were to go into something where we do only had maybe two kids, but we still wanted to provide, we could potentially offer live through the third-party. But that's not really what we're looking at. Then it wouldn't be necessarily our curriculum.
No, and typically most of the programs, you can have a third-party, um, that provides a teacher. More than likely, we would not do that. It would be, electives would be asynchronous. With, with the LO mentor. I'm really not interested in, I want to try very hard to not, um, use vendors, their teachers. It, it needs to be Lake Orion teachers. Even, even if, um, and again, for the electives, that would be fine. They would be asynchronous, but at least they would still have a Lake Orion mentor that would then be, um, you know, working the curriculum and being able to touch base with our students. I really don't feel comfortable with, not at this point anyway, in the game of, um, having the vendor provide the teacher.
Questions? I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, I also am not too comfortable with recordings for elementary-age students. I think that's a very difficult for the young learners.
Yeah, it de, it definitely is. And that's why we are going to try to avoid it. But again, not knowing, I felt we have to be transparent because, um, if the numbers aren't there, we could be forced to look at that option. We don't want to. It's not, you know, that's not where we want to go. So we'll try to do everything we can to avoid it. But again, being transparent, I, I really don't think it's going to happen, but you know what, the past two years, I'm not, I'm not sure that I want to come out and, you know, say that. It, it could at this point.
All right, other questions? Any other questions? Please speak up if you have one. I, I did have a question. I think Nick made a great point about, um, a student being in Dragon Virtual for the right reasons. Along those lines, is there any tool or assessment or guidance that is available to parents and students to kind of assess their suitability for success in Dragon Virtual versus in-person?
We're actually, we're actually looking at that to see, um, you know, what kind of assessment and what the validity of that assessment is and what it looks like. So we are pursuing that. We're looking into that now at this particular point. Um, but I think the biggest, um, the biggest thing that parents can use, and obviously this would only be for those, um, students that are in Dragon Virtual now, would be performance now. Now that certainly doesn't cover everybody because not everybody, right, is in Dragon Virtual. So that's why we're going to try to find, um, some kind of question. So that's why we're gonna try to find some kinda questionnaire that would kinda help maybe guide this decision. But if you have a student, the best is if you, if the student is in Dragon Virtual now, it's all about how they are doing.
Sure.
It's gonna be the same.
Great. All right, thank you. All right. Thank you, Nick. That's great information. And it sounds like everybody's on top of this.
Well, now we have middle school.
All right.
We have high school, so.
Yes.
Hang on.
Oh, I didn't know Nick was gonna handle all of them. All right, go ahead. I'm sorry.
We're rolling. All right, Dragon Virtual, twenty-one, twenty-two, middle level. Very similar to elementary, we are, uh, we, we gathered the feedback from our parents, our students and our staff. And we're not gonna have, oh, I'm gonna make sure I'm on the right slide. There aren't gonna be too many differences between twenty-one and, and, and this year. Currently this year at middle school Dragon Virtual, we are, including synchronous live instruction, five days a week. We have that going on currently in our core content areas. And that follows our daily bell schedule for our students. So as, as the schedule ebbs and flows, our virtual learners have been able to adjust to those in-person schedules. Because our, our, our middle-level teachers are doing both, and, and hats off to them for doing that. It's an incredible workload for them, but they're weaving those virtual hours into their, their schedule on a daily basis. We're currently employing asynchronous electives through our third-party partner, Edgenuity. And our LOC S teachers are serving as mentors for those courses, providing feedback, communicating, making sure our students are, are making sure our students are staying on progress. Along with that, our, our mentors are offering designated weekly office hours for student support. And if you look over there on the right-hand side of the, the slide, you won't notice too many differences. There's really only one thing, we've decided to switch our third-party partner for our, our elective courses for the middle level. We are going to be using Pearson Canexus, but continuing to use our LOC S teachers for course mentors. And I, I, I need to reiterate that these, uh, the asynchronous electives, i- it's only for electives. We will have live instruction with our, our LOC S staff in core content areas still. We got a lot of feedback from our parents that that format is working. You know, we're in the middle of a pandemic and it's continuing to keep our students in, in the right place and, and they're growing as they go. So we'll, we'll continue to, to use that model as we look forward to next year. We'll continue to offer those office hours of support with our LOC S mentors in those elective courses. So on the whole, the, the two programs are gonna look very similar from this year to next. Very much along the lines of the elementary side of things, we're going to utilize our LOC S curriculum, and that's gonna follow the same in-person curriculum maps. Our core classes taught by LOC S teachers. We're con- will continue to use Microsoft Teams for live meetings. Our asynchronous electives, again, will be through Pearson Canexus, the DV elective classes. We're gonna be offering, you know, the staples of phys ed, computers, art, world language, exploring music. And, and we, there's obvious challenges with offering certain courses in a virtual format. You know, live music, the band choir, some of those courses, we are not able to offer in the virtual format. But we do have a wide selection here of elective offerings for our middle-level students. The schedule itself, we're gonna have live daily virtual meetings in our core classes. Again, all, same as elementary, all that core area instruction will be recorded for students to refer back to at a later date, or if they're absent, they need to review that lesson. Technology will continue to support the students in that regard, with, with the district device. And just like the elementary, students will be able to participate in all those extracurricular activities, after-school events at their assigned neighborhood school. Along with the elementary, special education, five oh four students will be continued to receive services and support. Those unique services are going to be tied to virtual and, and adjusted accordingly. We'll continue to offer, offer the English learner supports with an LOC S E L teacher. And our qualifying students will continue to receive LSS support with the LO interventionists. Uh, and if you're sensing a theme here, the program expectations. We're going to ask students at all of the levels, you'll see this come up again in the high school, we're gonna ask our students to come in, in-person periodically for the state assessments. We may require them to come in periodically for our, our own local assessments. I said it before, as students start to age in our program here, the cameras become more of an issue. We do need those to be on, we need our students participating in the lesson, so we're going to require that those cameras are on. Attendance, we're going to require as well, attending the live instruction, turning in the assignments and, and encouraging that two-way communication between our student and the teacher. We're really going to be monitoring our student progress through that, throughout the process next year. Making sure that, again, it, just because you are in the program from the start, doesn't mean that it's the right fit throughout. It doesn't automatically qualify. We wanna make sure that this is the right fit for our students. So we'll continue to examine their, their progress as, as we go throughout the program. And, and we'll continue to support our, our students as best we can. But if the program's not working out, that's a, that's definitely a conversation that we need to have with, with admin, support, parents, the student, and, and, and make sure that students are in the right place here. So speaking to that, that student fit, again, we need self-motivated learners. They need to be able to work through those asynchronous courses for their electives at the middle level. They've gotta have some discipline, they've gotta be able to make their own schedules. Um, and one thing that really stands out that is, is that we've noticed this year in our remote learning format and our DV students at the middle level is, is this willingness to participate in the class. We know our students are getting the most out of the class when they're active participants, when they're asking questions. And that's really a side of, uh, virtual that, that goes unnoticed sometimes is, is that students need to be self-advocates in this format. The teachers don't have that ability to just stop by a desk and make those informal adjustments for students. So we need them to self-advocate and, and speak up, ask questions, participate, all of those things next year, moving forward. We'll offer it, uh, grades six through eight. Much like the elementary, those class sizes are gonna be similar to in-person, we're not gonna grow those sections beyond what, what would be appropriate. We want this to be a, a positive learning experience for our DV students. We're going to ask that students select a full year of courses. So they're going to plan on that full year of Dragon Virtual, just like the elementary. Well, if, if returning to in-person is, is requested or, or looked at, you're gonna need some administrative approval. And we're going to specify that we want this to occur at semester. With the complexity of the schedule and the staffing, any great fluctuation either way could really, could really obstruct the viability of this program. So we wanna make sure that, that any changes being made are happening right around semester time, if need be. Um, and then, uh, students must have that full schedule of DV courses. Each academic term, we can't, we can't offer a, a partial schedule or anything. It has to match that in-person schedule that a student would normally have. As far as next steps for element, uh, excuse me, middle, we, uh, the scheduling process has moved up because of that complexity of the schedule, making sure students are all placed. So we're looking at student scheduling starting very soon here. We're asking that parents and families make the commitment to Dragon Virtual by March seventeenth. And I know high school is starting to communicate their scheduling process to families, middle level will be happening shortly here. And we want to stress this heavily, that the commitment to Dragon Virtual is gonna be made in the scheduling process. I know this year, we had a separate registration process through the LOC S website. This year, students will be registering for Dragon Virtual, built into the scheduling process. So they won't have to find a separate registration anywhere on the Lake Orion website. Beyond that, Dragon Virtual student-staff assignment, as we get in, we've collected all of our registrations and we've collected all the, the class selections, we'll start filling out our schedule and assigning staff. We'll continue to work on that targeted professional development for our staff, so we can employ some best practice and make sure our, our staff are trained up. And then those students will receive their full schedule in August, the same time as in-person students. And we will open it back up for middle-level questions before we get to the high school.
Hi, it's Danielle. I had a quick question, um, just more about the third-party. One of the big points of contention this year was the Edgenuity, and I noticed that we're switching over to Pearson. Can you just maybe speak to a little bit of, you know, what Pearson offers differently that Edgenuity, you know, doesn't offer? Or, you know, what, really truly what the difference will be for the student experience?
What really set Pearson apart for me was the user experience. I found it much more user-friendly, um, the flow of the classes, the flow of the coursework. It just, i- i- it just seemed a little more seamless than Edgenuity. Uh, Edgenuity felt a little clunky, and even on the staff side of things, I know it was a little more clunky. The actual lessons and content themselves, I've had the opportunity to look through quite a few courses. One, one course in particular really stood out for me, it was a biology course for a, for a high school student. And one of the labs that, that was involved in the course, they were, uh, we were selecting moths from a forest. Did you, it was a digital forest and you were trying to find moths that were camouflaged on different tree bark colors. And it was collecting data for you as you went, so it was a whole process of natural selection. It just, that was something that wasn't offered through Edgenuity, sort of this interactive element. And I know if we had a lot of parents on here and they, they'd offer their opinions, they'd say, you know, well, they're learning from a video on Edgenuity and then they're turning around and they're answering questions. Yes, that's still on Pearson, that's still part of it, but Pearson really pulled in those other elements and I've been really impressed with the product so far.
Excellent, thank you.
Other questions?
Hey Jim, this is Burgett.
Yes, please.
And I, I understand that we're gonna be talking about schools of choice in, in the workshop in two weeks. But the timeframes that you have, and I'm sure this will apply to, maybe not to high school, but the timeframes that we have for registering for Dragon Virtual, there will be an allotment or consideration separate for schools of choice, I presume, when it comes to that?
Yes, there's always a separate window for schools of, schools of choice. And all of these are scheduling and our schools of choice window all align. They're not the same, but they align in, in the, um, in the fact that, you know, we do our students first. We gotta see where our numbers are and then we move to schools of choice. There's a process, a certain order that things have to be done.
Just wanted to clarify it out loud for, for everyone.
Thank you, Burgett. Other questions, just please speak up. All right, sounds like we can move on to the high school, Nick.
Easy peasy. Here we go. Dragon Virtual High School, and, uh, we have, uh, Tony and Steve here to support too. Because this is the program where we'll see the, uh, the widest sweeping changes. Many of the parents know that, a- and many of you know that, our, uh, high school program is through Edgenuity right now. We tried very hard over the summer and as early, as far back as March to make more of a middle-level program at the high school. But with the complexity of the schedule, we just, we just couldn't provide that and we had, we had to switch over to Edgenuity in sort of this asynchronous approach. But with the amount of time we've had to plan and prepare for this, we are happy to be making some changes at the high school. And, um, I've already touched on this, but Dragon Virtual this year, we have the asynchronous coursework through Edgenuity, we still have those LOC S teachers serving as our mentors with the office hours. And our course options were really, um, one of the things that we, that lured us to Edgenuity initially was that our course options were pretty equivalent to what we were offering to our, our in-person students through Edgenuity. So our students didn't lose a lot of those, those courses that they currently had on their schedule. And I know Heidi said this already, but our students were scheduled. So we had to make something fit into what we already had and we were being reactive. So Edgenuity was a nice option because it covered us in that regard. As we look ahead to twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, and we've had this time to plan and prepare, we're ready to incorporate synchronous, uh, learning with live instruction multiple times in a school week. And that's going to include electives. We're able to do that at the high school, we have a little more flexibility with, with teacher certification and a number of teachers frankly, to provide, uh, live instruction in our elective areas as well as our core areas. The meeting schedule is going to correspond with our in-person schedule. So our virtual learners will actually be able to look at the, uh, the LOHS bell schedule for their, uh, their virtual meeting times. And we'll have some asynchronous work incorporated on those non-meeting days. Because we're exploring, uh, the necessity of five days of virtual teaching, two days, three days. There's great flexibility when we start exploring a, a, a three-day, let's just, we'll just use a three-day, uh, meeting schedule for a class in a week. So on those off days, teachers will be incorporating asynchronous work for their students. So it's, it's not just a down day, but, um, uh, we'll continue to offer those live meetings, uh, multiple times a week. Uh, just like this year, we'll continue to offer a diverse catalog of quality LO courses. We have, uh, in count over a hundred courses to offer. But, um, we've also looked at reducing some of the course offerings. Again, like the middle level, there are just some courses that don't translate over to a virtual learning environment that we won't, uh, offer next year. The curriculum, LOC S, same as in-person, we'll use those LOC S curriculum maps. The, uh, core and elective class, uh, classes will be taught by LOC S teachers. Will continue to utilize Microsoft Teams for our live meetings. The schedule will be live, weekly, virtual core and elective class meetings, and all instruction will be recorded like the middle and elementary levels. Students will continue to receive district-provided device. And students are still eligible and will be encouraged to participate in extracurricular activities beyond the school day. And we, again, I, I can't stress that enough, we want our students to be, uh, involved in a social element. We want to encourage them to do that, um, if, if they elect to go in the, the virtual format for Dragon Virtual. As in the other levels, students with, uh, IEPs and five oh fours will continue to be supported. English learners supported with LOC S E L teachers. And our LSS staff will continue to support our qualifying students. This year has taught us a lot, um, we've, especially this form of virtual learning, which is traditionally virtual, asynchronous, independent, uh, task-oriented learning. We've noticed that the majority of our students have found success in this format. Some, uh, have, have struggled with the workload, some have struggled with, um, the actual delivery of the instruction. Which is why we're starting, we're, we're really intending to change the program and, and provide that live instruction. But it's also taught us about, uh, what sort of student fits into this program uh, and, and what student will succeed in this program. And and what student will succeed in this program? We're going to continue to expect these elements from our students. In-person designated state assessments. Periodic local assessments may be incorporated. Can't stress this enough, cameras on on the live meetings, attendance, all of the things we've been talking about since the beginning here of the presentation. We want our our students present and involved in the live instruction. And that student fit piece, this. Because we are changing the program here, we really need to take a look in and for our students to look in at themselves and and make that. That determination whether or not this would be for them. Granted, the the program is shifting away from sort of this asynchronous independent approach. But some about, but these elements are still woven in there, we need the the self-motivated student, we need the willing participant, we need people. We still need our students to be task oriented and flexible. The DV program is going to be open to all LOCS students grades nine through twelve. And just like the middle level, that's going to be established through the scheduling process, which began this week, it began. On the eighth. Students will select that full year of courses like middle level. And returning to in-person will require administrative approval. Students will have to have that full schedule of Dragon Virtual courses in the academic term. What's unique about the LOHS program because we have the staff flexibility here. We're really, we're excited that we're only going to need that third-party instructional platform in specific situations. As an alternative for specialized classes or electives. Third-party instruction platforms could potentially be utilized for specialized electives to expand. Or expand course options and opportunities for students, so. We are confident that we'll be able to provide a a diverse catalog of courses to our high school Dragon Virtual students. With our LOCS staff, but. You know, we don't want to, we don't want to remove the possibility or the potential for a a specialized class. That a student is really seeking to, we want to include that and offer it. When necessary or when it when it makes sense. So where we're at for our next steps for LOHS, our student scheduling process is already begun, it's going to continue into March. We're asking the the commitment to DV to be made by March eighteenth. And that's again, through the scheduling process. Students don't have to go to the LOCS website to register, it's just built into their scheduling. After that, we'll start assigning students, start assigning staff. We'll provide that professional development for our staff, we're going to be incorporating the the Pearson Conexus platform. There's going to be some training involved in that, getting our mentors up to speed on a new platform. We want to continue to develop our staff fluency with Microsoft Teams. And any other. Software or hardware that might improve the virtual learning environment, we have. Smartboards coming out, which are actually incredibly helpful. The software suite with. The smartboards at the high school are is going to work well in the virtual format. Students will receive their schedule then in August, at the same time in-person students receive theirs. And we will open it up to questions here for the the LOHS before we get to learning options and Kristen Slawinski.
High school questions, yes, Burgett.
Yes, Nick, on the slide that you've had that compared this year to what you're planning for next year. I tried to capture my thoughts on what it said, you had the definition of synchronous learning. With live instruction, there you are, thank you so much. And my question is. As I process this. It it sounds like there's days where there isn't class, it almost sounds like hybrid, am I interpreting that correctly?
Yes, and and we'll have asynchronous work built into those days that there is not class, so students will style up an expectation to. To complete schoolwork, yes.
And this is, it's, the program is kind of, you know, as we start from the elementary to the middle to the high school, you can see this is kind of. The growing up, you know, stage.
Absolutely, well, it starts Miriam College is what I'm seeing, so.
And that's a whole nother topic, don't get me started.
So I just wanted to make sure as we were working through this that I captured that properly, so thank you for going back to that and explaining that. And then I just have a side note on this. As I noticed. In your presentations where there's special ed considerations. And the requirement knowing in these that these students would need to come periodically to the building. For whether it's possibly for state assessments or other other sorts of things. Would would we still have a requirement to transport our special ed students for that?
That depends upon if the transportation is in the IEP. If it's not in the IEP, then no.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Yeah, and I I just want to, I want to throw out, I know you're you're all welcome to ask more questions, I do want to throw out a a big thank you to. To Steve and and Tony for all their work on this too, they've been. They've been more than just help helpful with this, they really were the. The driving force behind the the shift at the the high school, so. Got to say thank you to their their ideas here and their their hard work throughout this.
Other questions for Nick, Heidi, and anything we've talked about before we move on to learning options? Okay, let's. Let's hear about the Dragon Virtual at Learning Options, please.
Alright.
I'm ready to go, so if you want to.
Alright, I'll try and keep up with you here, Kristen.
Okay. So, um, two of the major components of Dragon Virtual at Learning Options is flexibility and individualization. And because of that, we are offering full or partial day virtual learning courses. So really, the goal is for Learning Options students to be able to create a daily schedule. That really meets their individual needs and customize their experience. By choosing courses from a mix of our in-person court, um, person classes, if that's what they would prefer, or if that's what's best for them. And then along with virtual courses that are offered at a self-paced rate. So for example, even currently, I have one student that has a virtual course first hour. And works at home for that portion of the day, then comes in for our second and third periods. And then goes to OTAC for, and OTAC is the Oakland Technical Campus. So we were really able to customize like the perfect schedule for that student. And then I have some students that are, you know, with me all day until the last period of the day and they leave. Early to do a virtual class then, and then all the way to a full day virtual, I have a student currently that is traveling the country. And needs that flexibility, so being able to, you know, work on schoolwork at a flexible location and pace to meet. Her needs. The graduation requirements for virtual students and in-person students or any combination in between is twenty-four. And we. We make sure that students are meeting the Michigan Merit graduation requirements. And they are earning a Lake Orion Community Schools diploma. And so virtual courses, because of these requirements, if we do utilize a third party, they have a Michigan certified teacher of record. So the virtual curriculum, because of the flexibility that we need to offer to our several of our students, we do use third-party providers. And we have a large pool that. I work with students based on unique maybe interests or learning styles. So anywhere from Conexus, edgenuity, e-dynamic learning, fuel education. Lincoln Learning and Amentum, just to name a few, I have actually students in each one of these platforms currently. And so. We also, this year, especially because of the pandemic, really have grown. Our remote learning with our with our core Learning Options teachers as well, so we are going to explore continuing that. For the for the next school year as well, so. The possibility of offering virtual learning for students. Along with in-person students at the same time. So again, each student's schedule is really individualized to align with their interest. Their EDP, which is their educational development plan, and this really makes sure they're ready for next steps in career and education. So. With that, like I said, the flexibility and that individualization, they have control if they are in a virtual course. Over the time, location and pace. And also it is asynchronous, and that sometimes is what students need, so that daily seat or live attendance is not going to be required. All of our students will be given a mentor from Learning Options and that staff member will meet with them weekly. Either virtually or in-person. The goal there is to establish plans and help the student achieve success and also keep in touch with the parent and the teacher of record. We have a virtual learning lab, so that's a, basically, now that all of our students have laptops, it's a way for them to access wifi. But also have teacher support if they need, and also for proctoring of unit assessments and exams. And that will be part of the program. So, you know, unless there's a very unique situation, like I mentioned with the student that's out of state. All of our students will be required to come into building for unit assessments and exams. One of the great things about Learning Options is our partnership we have with. Lake Orion High School, and so all students that attend Learning Options High School can participate in athletics, clubs. And any activities that are happening, a lot of our students love the dances, prom and that type of thing that go on at Lake Orion High School. And then OSTC is a huge component of our career readiness. So many of our students participate and enroll in the Oakland Technical Campus. And if you are a Dragon Virtual Learning Option student, you will also have that opportunity. So our program will be offered for students in grades nine through twelve. It's an application process and you have to be accepted into the Learning Options program. Then, after accepted, you will meet with me and staff and we create, we have like a staffing meeting where we really sit down. And create the schedule that best fits that student. And also aligns with obviously the graduation requirements, because the ultimate goal is graduation. We don't require a full year commitment, because like I said, it it is about flexibility. And so we are looking at scheduling students for either semester or a term depending on that current schedule. And then at the end of that term or schedule, or sorry, semester, we would be able to revamp the schedule and. Look at the all the opportunities available and schedule again. Learning Options High School has a special education program as well, we have students that have IEPs and 504s and as a team. We really meet to make sure that this, in terms of a Dragon Virtual program, would be the best choice for that student. So it really becomes an IEP team decision. And then if that is the best choice, then we would add any types of accommodations or modifications as needed. We support our English learners with our EL department at Lake Orion Community Schools. And we also have learning support teachers for any students that need extra support in. English, math, and also social emotionally. So next steps. Little different than in the previous years, the Learning Options application is going to indicate. Or students are going to indicate on the application if they are interested in a full-day Dragon Virtual program. A partial-day Dragon Virtual program or a full-day in-seat Learning Options program, and so we're going to be able to kind of look at. So we can plan accordingly to what our student body, first of all, need or wants, and then I will like to say that. Sometimes students want something and it's not what they really need, and so that conversation. With the parent and the student and the team is really going to be important, like I said, this is an application-based program. So we are only going to be accepting students into the Dragon Virtual program who we think and with free data that that will be successful. So applications are due May, May fourth, and then we will notify acceptance by. May fourteenth, and we have limited spots. And then during that May through June of the end of the school year, we will have meetings that will occur where we will really. Dive into that creative scheduling and then all students will receive their official schedule in August. And that's it.
Great, thank you, Kristen. So questions about the Options program? Please speak up if you have one.
Hey, Kristen, this is Burgett.
Hi.
Oh my gosh, I am so thrilled to hear your presentation on this, and I know you can appreciate my background on this with you, right? Thing that thrilled me the most about your presentation. Is the slide that showed the what students could choose from, you weren't locked into anyone, I'm looking for you because I'm actually trying to talk to you, I lost. That, oh, there you are, that. It it was the opportunity, so edgenuity isn't well liked by somebody, while you had, were there five selections on there? That impresses me, that's outstanding, and knowing you the way I know you, that you probably are familiar with them all. And you would be able to guide students who are interested in whether they're all-day virtual or whether they're creating hybrid virtual. Outstanding.
Thank you. And I would like to add too, this is not, the good news is this is not something. That is new to us, this is something that we have been doing. For years, and so, you know, every year there's more programs and more courses available and more choice. And every year we just learn more about it so that we really can tailor and make just the best situation for each student.
It has been an evolution, hasn't it? When I first started on the board in eleven, virtual school was terribly frowned upon, it overall in the realm of education, there were many. Colleges and universities that would not recognize a virtual diploma. They would, military wouldn't recognize it, so some people say that Lake Orion frowned upon the virtual. All the years ago, well, yeah, because it it wasn't a solid educational system and over the years it has evolved, it doesn't hardly recognize itself, so. This is an amazing conversation we're having tonight.
I agree.
Thank you, Burgett, other questions? I did have a question, go ahead Jake.
The question, you don't know what you don't know until you haven't heard it, so I heard applications at options, so this question will go back towards Nick. That at the other levels, you you put out the recommended student profile, but is that a. A truly a student family choice that even if an administrator thinks that a student wouldn't be a good fit? Does the family still get to choose that they want to be in Dragon Virtual?
We're exploring some options with that, one of the elements that I'd like to involve is a probationary period for students where we really examine. Student progress in the program. And, you know, this past year has been sort of a dry run for us with. The future of Dragon Virtual, so we have a lot of data, we have a lot of evidence. And and we have. Certainly, an ability to make a recommendation and and support that recommendation for our students, but ultimately. Not sure. Heidi, I don't know if we are able to actually deny.
Yeah, initially, yes, they will be admitted into the program. However, to stay in the program, they have to be successful in the program, I mean, there's only going to be a certain extent, right? That if we have students that are not participating, students that are failing, then they'll be coming back in person. But as Nick said, there will be a process that we work through for that. Just like we would any other, you know, typical issue where we would, obviously, there would be, you know, communication between the parents and the student. A plan would be put together to try to help that student become successful within the program. But ultimately, if that were not the case, then we would be moving them back to in-person because it just. But ultimately, if that were not the case, then we would be moving them back to in-person because it just, you know, it doesn't work. And we've tried a lot of things to try to make it work, then um it, this is not for every student.
And the other thing I noted is that I'm overall really pleased of how much we developed our programs based on what we've learned. We didn't, we didn't rest on our success and we were willing to admit where the programs needed to be enhanced. And at these last two presentations at the, at the high school level. It, you know, we, you have talked before in Burgett mentioned virtual, virtual had a certain meaning of of purely asynchronous. Your remote computer-based learning and we're definitely not, the Dragon Virtual Programs aren't there. But what intrigued me on the last thing was, Learning Options has a lot of options. You know, in terms of pick one class, do, you know, you know, fit your needs. And was wondering if that would also be possible through the traditional high school at all that.
Eventually, yes, and we will get there, but not next year.
Okay.
Quality over quantity. So, but we will get there. The, I, like I said, this is going to be an evolution. So I guarantee you that the, you know, this is, this is the programming for fall two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two. Twenty-two, twenty-three, you'll see it expand again.
I appreciate that because that that's a very fair answer that says we want to do it really well. And this is what we're comfortable doing really well in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
That's right.
I, that's a great answer. Thank you.
I really do want to thank all of the administrators uh and teachers that have been involved in this development. You know, this is, this has not been an easy task. But I'm, I'm extremely proud of the program that we have uh presented this evening. And there have been a lot of people involved in that. So I truly thank everyone. Um and as well to our parents and our students because as you can see, their feedback um was absolutely valued and honored. And you can see that in the uh changes to the program. So this truly has been a collaborative effort. And um really, we're only just getting started, honestly. And I'm, I'm, I'm so happy to be looking at the proactive and what fall will bring and um even into the following year. So there's a lot of opportunity here for our students for sure.
It's a monumental effort and uh it will certainly yield positive results for all the work and uh thought that's gone into this. And we're looking forward to the future. So thank you to all of you who are a part of this. This is a, it's a great thing. We're very fortunate to have this program and to have you leading it.
All right. Thank you, Administrator.
Thank you. Have a great night. All right. So we will move on to uh our communications update. And Mark?
Can I propose a five-minute break because just a, a bit of a bio break or?
Everybody want to take five?
I'll be here when you come back.
All right. So uh we'll wait for you. We'll hear from you at eight forty-eight. All right, let's take five.
Thank you.
Steve?
Hi Julie.
So I just tried hitting that button. Did that work for you?
It did. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to put you back.
Software on it will now allow me to see anybody or um speak unless I'm unmuted on your side. So I'm fine in case I need to say anything in closing comments. Otherwise I could stay muted. If Jim could skip me over closing comments, that'd be even better, actually.
All right. Well, I'll just watch. If you raise your hand, I'll, I'll hit that button again. Okay?
Okay. Are you going to mute me then?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Burgett will be here in a moment and we'll be ready to roll. There she is. All right. So why don't we get started? Uh we'll uh pick it up uh here with Mark. And Mark, uh can you update us?
Sure. Uh just have a couple of things, most of which uh I think Heidi and Ben will hit on later, the things we've worked on. The first thing unrelated to that is the Inside the Dragon Show should be out in the next couple of days. So uh thank you very much to ON TV for their assistance with that. And I wanted to see great things that happened in December and January in the district. And uh we're working with Ben um on a new platform, communications platform that we, he's gonna show you tonight called Thought Exchange. And uh working with Heidi on a number of different initiatives, including we're promoting the Early Childhood Center. And she'll tell you more about that later. So uh just been busy. And then the Dragon Virtual stuff, uh some of the behind-the-scenes stuff on the website we've been working on. So any questions for anyone? I'll be back later with learning highlights as well.
Questions for Mark? All right, we'll hear from him later. All right, thanks, Mark. Uh move on to public participation and Julie?
There are currently no live attendees following with us, so we have no participants.
All right. So move on to strategic area discussion items and we'll begin with governance and Ben.
All right. Well, thank you. I appreciate it. And thank you for the good discussion around Dragon Virtual. So I'm very excited about our progress with that. Uh legislative update, uh just a few things. Uh Governor Whitmer uh signed um an executive order uh to create a student uh Recovery Advisory Council. Uh in our state, it's a twenty-nine-member council that will provide guidance and recommendations uh to the governor and the state superintendent, state budget director regarding student recovery. So um more to come as to how that all uh unfolds. Uh contact sports were allowed to resume last Monday. And so our student athletes have uh, you know, been, been rolling and you know, they started their competitions. And uh as Chris Bell put it, they'll be running uh kind of professional schedules because they, they're going to be working hard to get lots of games in and whatnot. And the kids are really uh excited about that. I'm really excited about that. I know families are excited about that. So um looking forward to uh, you know, our, our seasons. Uh the most recent order uh that is out there, just as a reminder to everybody, um I know the board's well aware of this. Uh but as far as for public, but the board still has to hold the Board of Ed meetings uh virtually. It's not an option to uh run them in person currently. You know, and we've, we've become pretty proficient in running these uh virtually. But I do know, you know, there's an interest in getting to the in-person. Um when it becomes an option, we'll uh talk about how that uh will look uh for the board. Uh there's still some work going on uh with some of the spending bills uh that have been out there, but nothing definitive has been released at this point. Uh so we haven't received some of the money that, you know, you've heard about in the news and and whatnot. But uh we hope eventually it will be coming. Um Governor Whit- Whitmer's uh administration will be unveiling the full details of her executive budget recommendations for twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh tomorrow morning uh at a joint hearing of the House and Senate Appropriations Committees. Little sneak peek to it. It looks like there should be a per pupil increase proposed. Some funds for summer school and a variety of categoricals. But um again, that's just the start of things. Um but I did want to share that, that that would happen uh tomorrow. Thanks to a number of the board members and John for participating in the uh Plant Moran PD uh with me over um, over the weekends. Two of the last three Saturdays, there's been uh learning sessions. Um I think they were good for the Board of Ed. Uh they were also good for John and I and uh kind of reemphasize some points that we hear from our associations as well. So thank you for your efforts and in your learning there. Just to give a little bit of a heads up, the twenty-fourth, uh we do start earlier in the day. It is a long, uh you know, a longer meeting or workshop. Uh we'll be doing a variety of things that we talked about. You know, last month, we do have the Superintendent Evaluation Tool um training for the board members that will start at three o'clock. That looks like it'll be about a one-hour training. Uh we then will have likely a small break and then a discussion around school of choice and and enrollment. Um in the budget workshop and then we'll have our normal business. And we'll be doing the Extended COVID nineteen plan at that meeting. So we will identify an actual clock time that will start up that uh normal business and Extended COVID nineteen, uh just so the public's aware. So they can uh, you know, strategically join the meeting when it is uh meaningful to them and not have to, you know, sit through the entire um timeframe that we have. So we'll be putting that out um in our agenda and uh you'll, you'll be seeing some drafts on that, but just wanted to give you a heads up. And then also uh our cabinet team met with Senator Baer this week um as part of our cabinet meeting. It was nice to meet her one-on-one. I've been in quite a few meetings um with a number of other superintendents, but it was nice that she met with us. You know, just, just within our team at, at Lake Orion and we talked about uh some of the things that were important to us, answered some of her questions. She answered some of our questions. So that was nice to uh continue that collaboration with her. So any questions at all? Okay, all right. I'm going to uh move into an update on COVID nineteen. So I'm gonna do a little bit of a, I'm gonna do a screen share here. This might be a little, little clunky. I'm gonna go to some different um items uh during this. So I've got to. All right. Can you see my screen? Okay? Okay. All right. Just a couple of things. I did want to mention uh that we are currently at our seventeenth day. Uh we, we did have one snow day in there. Uh so that was a little bit of excitement for uh staff and students, um certainly parents as well. And uh so we've been going along pretty well and and I think it's important to recognize and understand that, that we are with our in-person uh instruction. We are serving eighty to eighty-five percent of our student population. Uh so I wanted to make sure to share that. I, I want to extend great thanks to our staff. Our staff has really been doing a great job. You know, the plans that we put into place, um they have implemented very well. Uh and that has come through when we've had COVID positive uh cases. We've, we've recognized that they are doing the things that uh were planned and that was, it was uh, you know, certainly appreciated and it makes uh a difference. Also, thanks to the families, you know, the sacrifices that they've made to commit to the schedules that we've provided. I know that we had some, you know, challenges initially and then we went ahead and uh, you know, tried to attack those challenges. And we think we've been able to support, you know, families uh at a pretty good level. So I, I do think both of those groups um wanted to mention as we uh started, is a reminder, our goals. Uh when we moved into this January program, we talked about this in December and then again into January. But our, our goals were number one, to have a safe and healthy learning environment when our students return back to school. Our second was to provide and implement a plan um to provide consistent and continuous in-person learning. And then the third that we were accomplishing uh as far as goals was to minimize the contacts um among our students and staff to eliminate the number of quarantines. This is, this slide is, is one that uh you have seen regularly and I want to continue to uh, you know, talk about this. As far as the testing results, we're in a great position. Uh that is not an issue any longer. Uh we are getting uh quick test results back uh and we are uh recognizing that. If you look here at this data, again, the green shows an improvement from the week prior. We have now experienced nine uh consecutive weeks of either improving COVID nineteen positive data or stable data. Stable meaning, you know, you know, within ten um as far as going up and down. So we, we are definitely in a better spot uh in the state of Michigan as well as across Oakland County and and certainly in our northern um portion. The positivity rate uh for Oakland County is three point nine percent. Uh and that is effective uh two seven, February seventh. And you really have to go back to uh October tenth to see a rate that low. So we are in a really good spot. Um that is data that has come from the um My Safe Start um data that is on the uh website. And so I wanted to make sure to share that, but we are really in a, a good position as far as uh where COVID is in the community and across our state. There are, uh in the seventeen days, I, I wanted to share uh with the board that in the seventeen days that we've been in person, we have had fifteen total positives. Meaning um positive cases that were, you know, within the school, um school district, students or staff. Uh we currently have, uh just so that you're aware, we have fifteen staff that are quarantined right now. And four of, uh four um that have uh COVID positive results. And we have a hundred and six students that are quarantined and five uh students with positive. That's, that's the current case count that we have that we're working our way through um right now. So the quarantines, the positive tests, the transmissions, you know, those are all things that we've really tried to address with our um mitigation strategies. The, the benefits of the schedules that we've had, you know, at the elementary. We've done a great job of avoiding uh some of those conflicts that we talked about with the transitions. You know, introducing fewer adults into the classrooms, you know, by reducing the electives and and introducing those asynchronously. Not having the lunchtimes, um doing the grab and go lunch and and breakfast. So we've done a great job with that. Same with the uh middle and high school. And the middle and high schools where we really have seen the benefits of the social distancing. We've been able to uh at the secondary levels with our hybrid format. You know, there certainly are some things that, you know, cause some challenges. But one of the things that we have been able to do is we have been able to provide social distancing at six feet. And that has really reduced uh the number of quarantines that we've had with our staff and with our students. And um you know, without that type of a format, we. you know, without that type of a format, we would not have been able to experience the low number of quarantines because we still do have, you know, some positives that are, you know, within the schools. We've talked about program integrity tonight. We talked about the assessment data. You know, that's certainly a piece of that. We had, we went down the road to the curriculum maps. We've talked about that. I'm not gonna reiterate those things, but we really have been able to provide consistency at all three levels by maintaining our schedules. And so, you know, we are happy with that. We'll continue to look at that as we move into making a decision and a recommendation in a few weeks. I do continue to meet with the, you know, all these areas here weekly. And that has been very good and we're gonna continue to get stakeholder feedback. Many of you probably have seen already, and I'm gonna go to a different spot here to share some things. But you've seen what's called a thought exchange and we started the thought exchange today. We did that to get community feedback. We did that to get staff feedback. Very pointed, pointed feedback, and I need to make sure that this gets over here on my screen. All right. Are you seeing the staff exchange or are you seeing the thought exchange? Do you see that? You see thought exchange? Okay. So the thought exchange has been very valuable. I, I did an exercise with our leadership team and it came through and it helps and you can do this in a, in a very short timeframe. You can do it in a longer timeframe, which is what we're doing with our community and our staff. So this is the dashboard that you're not really ever gonna see. This is really five different users, but I'm just sharing this with you and I'm gonna click into it. But just to give you some idea, we have, we sent this out probably around three o'clock. We currently have from the community, 1,361 people that have participated. And with those participants, that has generated 1,376 ideas. And what happens is those ideas get thrown out there. They're each individual's ideas. And then all of the other participants rate people's ideas on how it resonates with them. And so they can continue to rate over time. And what this does is this creates for us a report that will show like what all of the top thoughts and ideas are for people. And then that will help us as we move forward, make a recommendation. But this number here, and I'm not sure if you can see it or not. 53,496 ratings have already taken place from our community discussion. So that is a lot. That is really beneficial for us. I am gonna show you a little bit, and this is probably a better area here. This is we had two different survey questions on top of the thought exchange that we're generating. So the first one was what level does your student currently attend? So we're able to see like what the, who the participants are. And right now, we've had a lot of elementary folks. And then we've had a lot that have multiple levels. And down here in the second question, how would you prefer to see LOCs proceed with scheduling school days in the upcoming months? As of right now, 64% have selected move to full days and the traditional daily schedule. And 25% is the next highest with maintain the current schedule. So that gives us a quick snapshot about how, you know, our community is feeling and we'll be able to continue to you know, monitor this and eventually it will close. I think it's Tuesday at midnight is what we put on it. But that gives us an idea of how the community is feeling. There's really, in my assessment of this, as I, you know, manage this, this conflict that we have with, with our pandemic, there's really four legs to the table. There's the board, you know, there's the community, there's the staff and there's the students and they're all part of something that's very important that we keep stable. And so we'll need to continue to manage through that. If I take you to the staff survey, we currently have about 200 staff that have participated. We sent that one out a little bit later. And so I'll just show you that side of it, just so that people can see that. So we've had the respondents, again, we had the different levels that people were working because we'll be able to extrapolate this data on both of those. Like we'll be able to take the thought, top thoughts for our elementary group and our top thoughts for our secondary groups and really get an understanding. But you can see here, we've had the primary respondent so far has been pre K to five. And then next, it looks like it's our high school group, nine to 12. So as of right now, 68% of our staff feel like we should maintain the current schedule and 20% think that we should move to full days and the traditional daily schedule. So this is information, this is data. But this is the type of thing that I feel like I need as a, as a leader to make a recommendation to you as a school board, so that we can at least have all of the information and try to really come up with something that represents you know, what, what I think is best and give it to you as a board to consider as we move forward. Again, we had goals of, of safety, consistency, and we've been able to accomplish those things. I am going to move back here real quick and then we'll get into some questions. I'm sure there probably will be a few. If I get to my last slide, I want to share. You seeing that? Okay. Okay. So as far as the future options, there's, there's really, as I see it currently, four options. One, we could maintain our current schedules and I will be making a recommendation at our next meeting and how to, how to move forward for at least the next month, because that's what our responsibility is, is to do this on a month to month basis. But it would be to maintain our current schedules as we are. Add the restricted components. And if you recall, the restricted components really go around the unmasked times. So the lunch in the, in the breakfast times. Really, if we start adding instructional days or instructional time at any of the levels, that's going to you know, really require us to add back the lunches. So we need to keep that in mind. And then also we have reduced the specials at the elementary and introduced those in an asynchronous manner. But if we were to add those, that would be our second option is just to add everything back like we had in the one survey question to look like a traditional day. And then the third option could certainly be add, add some of their restricted components and do it incrementally. So kind of slowly get closer to the full, but not quite be there yet. And every one of these, you know, pose a challenge. You just saw two large data sources that really have differing views about how we should move forward. And that's really how we have lived in this pandemic, quite frankly. And then certainly the fourth option is a variety from above and, and there might be a great solution out there that we don't know yet. And that we will be, you know, developing, but all of the feedback that I get will really help. I'm hoping that we can have some, some discussion amongst the board about your thoughts about where we are, about where we're, we're going. And then, you know, I just think we need to keep in mind that every solution that we come up with creates problems. We've recognized that through this change and through this pandemic and will continue to support students to get through this year and continue to inspire them to learn. So with that, I want to open it up to some questions and some discussion.
Yes, Burt.
Ben, I may have missed this part. And for the thought exchange, how is that being communicated? Was that a text? Or was that an email?
So we actually, Mark sent it out, I think through the messenger that went out through. I'm gonna, I'll put it in the the board update. There's actually QR codes, there's links, there's a variety of different ways we can put it out through social media as well. What, what we did this afternoon to get it introduced was we, we did our school messenger and then emailed the entire staff. So I will have, like I said, I will have the link, you know, in the board update on Friday. Certainly your feedback here this evening is extremely valuable as well. So please feel free to share.
If I can have one more question?
Sure, please.
To take you back to your COVID presentation. You mentioned currently we had the, the number of quarantines and then the number of positives. Could you clarify the positives? Were those school related or were people exposed elsewhere? And because sometimes it makes a difference.
Yeah, the positives that I shared are staff or students that were in our facilities that, that tested positive and it was reported. So doesn't mean that it was transmitted within the school. They could have, you know, got the transmission outside. They came to school, had some symptoms and then, and then recognized it later.
Okay. Thank you.
And I, I do want to emphasize and I, I could go to it if you want me to, but on our website, on the front page of the website, we keep on there all of the COVID positives and you can see by day with somebody's positive, you can see by building, you can sort it to see them all in, in order. You can see it by buildings. We've had a number of people that have asked, you know, why we don't share that, but it is there on the website right in the middle, quite a large button. So please feel free to look at that. What other questions or discussion points do you have?
Ben, I, I went through it quickly because I got it kind of late. I mean, by the time I got to my email, but I, it seemed very user friendly. And my wife actually took, did quite a bit on it. She said it was very cool. So it, it looks like it, it could be a very valuable tool.
I see the thought exchange tools, Scott, having a lot of applications at this level, district level, as well as building levels. We've got five people that are trained. And, and we'll be using this moving forward. Frankly, when we do strategic planning, this is something I think that, you know, could really help us know, know a lot about what the community wants. But glad to hear you guys are participating in it.
Others. Would it be safe to say that this is a, a tool for guidance and not a polling on what should in fact be done?
Yes, absolutely. This, this is another source of data for me. I know that, you know, my ultimate responsibility and many say I hate to be in your shoes and I hear that all the time and I get it. But it is a responsibility I have. And so I'll take this data, the conversations I have with our leadership team, you know, our cabinet with you guys. It's all a piece for sure. There's no one group on this thought exchange on this call that is, you know, ultimately, I mean, ultimately, I'm gonna make a recommendation. The board's gonna, you know, make the approval. But I'll be using all of that information. No one group will tell us one way or another what we need to do.
Good. Thank you. Others. This is smart group. I know you have questions.
Well, I'm gonna push, I'm gonna push a little bit. You know, we had some goals. Our, our goal moving in December and January was that we wanted to really provide consistent instruction for our students. We wanted to mitigate the spacing and to eliminate the you know, the quarantines and having to flip. And we've had to flip. We flipped, I think, five classrooms so far, right around in that ballpark at the elementary level. And so our goals, we, we feel good about where our goals were. And I guess we just need to understand if our goals should maintain the same or if we should be doing some things differently and having a different goal set. We currently feel like, you know, the consistency is good for the students. It's certainly good for the staff. I know that, I know that families have adjusted. But I also know, you know, by looking at that data there that families want more. And I think that I think that when I am able to extrapolate that between elementary and middle and high, that'll tell me, that'll tell me some stories. Is it, is it one particular group? Is it a whole group that's feeling that way? So at any rate, looks like Steve has a comment.
Steve. Maybe Julie can unmute you.
Julie, can you help Steve?
Yeah, I'm trying. Steve, don't hit anything for one minute. I think we might actually be hitting the button at the same time and canceling each other out. Okay, did it prompt you to unmute? No, we still can't hear you. Let me try it one more time.
Could he type something in the chat if he was comfortable doing that or?
Absolutely. I'm not sure what device he's using. It's a little bit easier if you're on a computer versus an iPad to use that feature.
Sure.
No luck, Steve. You're not getting a thing that asks.
There is.
Sorry, everybody. Again, we have that software issue. I thought it was reversible and added. Thank you, Julie. Well, the backtrack of that, Ben, it's a moving target. I think the parents in the community just want to be informed. I think the cabinet and yourself are doing, and our teachers are doing a good job at this. But it's a moving target and that's, we all know that, but we need to be reminded that it's a moving target. As long as we're trying to keep in touch with the community, with the parents and understand their concerns and take their feedback. And to welcome their feedback, which I think we are, we're on the right track, but we have to understand. And I just want to remind everybody and myself that this is a changing environment daily. So we may have a good schedule for today, but there's nothing wrong to adjust it two weeks from now if we have to. I understand that may cause inconveniences, various hardships on people. But yet the goal is to provide the right atmosphere and a academic atmosphere in a safe environment and we're on top of it the best we can be, but we cannot have set rules at this point. That's just my comment and thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Others, other questions? Yes, Jake.
Well, I think the concern that, that I'm here, that, that comes, that, that I'm perceiving is more at the secondary level because we switched from where students were getting interaction every day to every other day. And it's, it, it deals with the amount of instruction time. So you put, you put out there that we have different options. So I guess the we, you laid out the options pretty well. So to hear from, from you is in, in your experience, you know, from other districts is what's the most concerning thing? Would it be having students be in school all day unmasked, potentially in the hybrid model at the secondary where we only had, call it half capacity? Or if we went to full capacity, which limits the ability to distance in class, but we would be requiring everybody to be masked all day because we'll stay with the shortened days and the grab and go lunch where, where there is no unmasked dining time. So I think the concerns that I'm hearing are that more instruction was, was delivered during the first half of the year when they were remote. So I guess that if we could get a sense from the administrators or, or the information flowing up, are they feeling like the students are getting as much instruction and, and the material, or maybe you already have a sense of that, you know, that we're in our fourth week of this model. But, but that's the concern that I'm having is that it's nice that they're there in person, but it seems like there's just less instruction and students at a certain age aren't particularly doing well with asynchronous lessons. They're watching them like their videos. They're not using them to their full advantage where they can pause them, they can, and, and the term that I heard was learning maturity level that you know, an 11 to a 15 year old, let's say, it, it's a struggle to think, oh, as I'm watching this video, I need to write down my questions. They're very used to when they're in class, they just blurt out their questions and the teacher can respond in real time. Are they really gonna watch a video and write down all their questions so they can ask their teacher the next day? So those are my thoughts, concerns.
Yeah, to be clear, you're primarily talking about middle school, right? When you're talking about the instruction and the differences and whatnot, because the high school didn't change.
Yeah, more so than, yeah, more so the middle school, sure.
Right.
You know, high school, when they were remote, were they every day?
No, the high, the high school hasn't changed since they've been in, in, in person. No, the high, the high school hasn't changed since they've been um in, in, in person.
But they were only in person for
A week.
Days in the first semester. So I'm really comparing it more to the remote model.
Got it.
Where, when they were remote, they were getting more instruction time.
Got it. I think that's, yeah, great. Go ahead, Heidi.
Wouldn't call it more instruction time. It, it's, it's different kind of instruction, right? You're t- I think, I think the word is live is what you're referring to. They were, right, yes, they were re- they were receiving more live instruction than what they currently are. However, teachers have been reporting that with the current schedule, they do feel like they are maximizing their time. You know, less, you know, less or shortened transitions. You know, you're taking out those things, right? That kind of takeaway, you know, lunch, you know, movement to lunch, movement between classes. All of that kind of has been condensed. So while they feel that, yes, you know, live instruction is only occurring every other day when the kids are in per- or, I'm sorry, live and in person is happening every other day. It is more um succinct, I guess I would say, and more um actually focused on the academics. They're, they're using their time. Th- there's just not those other things that come into play, I guess. Like I said, the transitions, the lunch, um, those sorts of things that, that kind of chip away um of time throughout the day. So, but yes, I mean, to your point, yes, they're only receiving live instruction in person every other day.
Did the answer for you, Jake?
Yeah, i- i- it was eh partially a question and partially a comment. I know it was sort of rambled on. I, I shared those thoughts with Ben directly, but I wanted to just let everybody on the board know that those were the, the concerns, the thoughts that I had.
Good. Well, we appreciate that. Yes, Danielle.
So I too shared my thoughts with Ben, but um I, I personally do have more particular at the middle school level, um, you know, some concerns about our level of instruction time. And for me, some of that just comes down to the fact that we don't have any passing time built into it. So if you look at our middle school schedule, we have forty-five minutes of instruction with zero passing time. So really, in reality, we don't have that forty-five minutes because by the time the students get in to the classroom, the teachers have time to clean the desk, the students, you know, get out their laptops, whatnot. You know, we're looking at maybe thirty-five, maybe forty minutes. I'm not there, so I don't know for sure. Um, and I think some of this for me circles back around to something we touched on earlier and, and Burgett more touched on it was our curriculum, you know, maps. If, you know, I, I know we've had to adjust those and amend those because of, you know, COVID in general, but if we did have an opportunity to have more in-person time, could, could those curriculum maps not have to be amended to the level that they may have to be if we, you know, continue in a, in the model that we're at now. Um, you know, and I, I just want to make sure that we're, you know, especially at the middle school level, really, really, really looking at the instruction time because, like I said before, these eighth graders are going to the high school. You know, and the high school isn't losing as much instruction time as the middle school is. So how is that going to look when we have this entire eighth grade class? Who, you know, had a fraction of the instructional time that they would have had, how, how is that going to translate forward? So that is my general concern and um, you know, I really think we need to find a way, whatever that looks like, um, to really, really think about in, increasing instructional face-to-face and personal, you know, in-person instruction time.
At the middle school?
Yes.
Got it. Okay.
Thank you, Danielle. Others, other questions, comments? Yes, Burgett.
Um, so I, well, I really appreciated the information Missy shared and, and Ben, I'm actually not sure what you're seeking here. You were pushing for information and I think you're asking for a more in-depth concerns as we work into the upcoming workshop. Um, so one thing I was hoping to hear with Missy's report was a little bit more into the high school, not just assessments, which is really what she gave us a broad definition of how well our students are doing with assessments. But I know from other districts, they've heard some um staggering results of what's going on with their high schoolers. Um, to the tune of one high school is in Oakland County has forty percent of their high school population receiving a D or an F in at least one class. I have another high school in the area that says they have doubled the amount of students not at grade level reading. And they're all scrambling with what to do for that. And I don't want us to be scrambling for anything. I hope that we're on target with what we're supposed to be doing. And my concerns are, um, also with social emotional learning. I know that there is more depression and anxiety and suicide, the number one cause of suicide right now in Ohio for ages twelve to eighteen. Um, the number one death of, cause of deaths of eight, twelve to eighteen in Ohio is suicide. And I haven't seen the statistics here in Michigan. Um, but I'm, I have a great concern about what we're doing and what the give and take is and where the balance is. So I'm just sharing, not looking for answers necessarily, you wanted some information, so I'm giving you some feedback.
Sure. And, and I do appreciate that. And, you know, we, I, is it in March, correct? We're having the high school come uh, to the, to report to the board, correct, Heidi?
We have not set that up. I mean, we can look at that. Yes, this, it, it's the same across the uh county. Yeah, we, we are seeing significant um increases in, in student uh failures.
Yeah, we, we know that and that's
That's a given.
Yeah, and we, we haven't ever said any, any different than that. Now, to say forty percent, I mean, we can't give you like those percentages right now. And, and certainly the, the grade level data that, uh, you know, Missy talked about is, um, you know, that, that is an indicator because that's established benchmarks and whatnot, but certainly the, the, the grades and that are, are certainly important. But no different, we certainly are, you know, facing some of the same issues. We recognize that. And, and the social emotional, you know, there has, there has been uh work within the district um on the social emotional supports. You know, we've done some surveys. We've done some, you know, lessons that have been put out, um, you know, intentionally. Um, you know, so we do recognize that. We haven't, that hasn't fallen on deaf ears or a- anything like that. We, we do recognize that. And it's one of the beautiful things about having the in-person is our staff can recognize those things and, and um in the supports that the students need. So um, again, more importance of keeping them in.
Thank you, Burgett. Other questions, comments? I'm sure there'll be more comments generated as we see feedback from various sources. And we have the opportunity to spend some time at length during the uh upcoming workshop where we can have some uh concentrated conversation about this and uh the related issues. So um, I appreciate your thoughts tonight. Ben, is there anything else you need right at this moment?
No, there's not. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll move on to the policy committee report and Burgett. Please.
Yeah, you've got me and I've got you guys after almost three hours of this. So I won't think none of you fall asleep. Uh, the policy committee met this past Thursday at noon. We met with our Neola representative, um, the awesome Wayne Peters. Um, Neola, I don't know how many of you know this, but Neola stands for the North, Northeast Ohio Learning Associates. And they're a, a group of retired administrators that got together to create this um business meeting the needs of districts um in a six, I think it's six states that they work with. And one of the things that you need to them is that your representative, so our representative Wayne, he's retired. He lives in our region that he represents. So we have, um, he was a retired, he's a retired superintendent from Holly. And we meet with him when there's um district updates. You will notice in your board packet that it, the, by and large, the majority of it is policy tonight, and that's what happens. And I just want to point out that sometimes, and if you attended the plant Moran Clark Hill um professional development, you heard them talk about having brief concise policies, which doesn't always um happen with Neola. And several years back, we attempted to get away from them. And we hired a law firm to do this for us. And we went, it worked. We got concise. We went from about a twelve inch binder to a one inch binder. But we ran into an issue with inconsistent um customer service with them, as you will. They, they weren't on top of keeping us up to date and current with federal and state laws. So we went back to Neola. So what we have in our board packet tonight is a first reading of the policies that are in there. Neola will um give you extra pages that are briefs and comments from their legal staff about the changes that you will be reading in the policies. So some of the pages are irrelevant to that. So I will jump into where we were on page twenty-three was the actual first policy. I'm going to start working our way through that. Page twenty-three is policy twenty-two ten. It's curriculum development and approved courses. The changes are all in green. If anything was removed, it's stricken in red. So i- it's easy for you to glance at it and see what's new and changed. So what's new in this one is the title, where they added approved courses and a paragraph at the end. And essentially the first, it's, this is the first policy reviewing. It's pretty straightforward. The change is um that it ties policy for board-approved curriculum and only board-approved curriculums that will receive state aid. And I'm going to start just marching through. If somebody has questions, you're going to need to speak up and stop me because I'm just going to work our way through this because it's so late. Um, page twenty-five, policy twenty-four twelve, homebound instruction program. The change here is adding a note from physician to, or if it, a physician's assistant is being able to request or apply for an individual for homebound instruction.
I have a question. Sorry. I uh was curious as to whether or not it's permissible to also add in there uh nurse practitioner. Uh, many uh primary care offices are essentially run by nurse practitioners. Uh, even more so than PAs. And uh I think that'd be a practical addition to this if it's permissible.
This does reflect the pupil accounting manual changes. And I don't believe that was added in there. And we can certainly check with Wayne to see whether or not that's a viable option. Um, but the change that was made was because the pupil accounting manual made the, made the adjustment. And we're, we're, we are reflecting that.
Got it.
We can check though.
I think Wayne mentioned in the meeting that it didn't cover nurse or nurse practitioner. I think he mentioned that in our policy committee meeting.
It's a pity.
But we could always clarify that as well.
Okay, great. Thanks.
So on page twenty-six is policy twenty-four-one-four on reproductive health and family planning. The green highlighted addition is actually a correction as this phrase was mistakenly left out from the update from Neola in two thousand and nineteen. On page twenty-seven, policy three-three-six-two-point-zero-one, threatening behavior towards staff members. This update eliminates the term anxiety and clarifies what might cause reasonable concern for physical or psychological well-being. Page twenty-eight through thirty-two, policy four-one-six-two, controlled substance and alcohol policy for commercial motor vehicle drivers and other employees who perform safety-sensitive functions. This is a policy that's just for employees. This policy has an example of a section where our district can select some options as we did on page twenty-nine, meaning there's X's, there's parentheses with X's. If we don't have an X in it, we didn't select it. And if we do, we did. And also for clarification, the appropriate administrators have been uh involved, meaning if it affected student achievement, Heidi has looked at it. If it was more HR, Rick has looked at it. And if it evolved finance, John has looked at it so that we've got our appropriate experts having input into the selection of some of these. So on page twenty-nine, in the middle of the page, you'll notice it was a numbered options that we have an X in all of those. Let's see. There's a lot of information in here about what's changed. And a focus on the federal motor carrier safety administration, federal motor carrier, that's what FMCSA. The notice which increases a minimum and annual percentage rate for random controlled substance drug testing for drivers of commercial motor vehicles, including school buses, to fifty percent of the average number of driver positions. They also have a clearinghouse for the drivers for any reported um issues that the schools will be able to uh look for and look to when they're hiring for this position. Um, it provides real-time access and updates to employers, including school districts, who will be required to query the clearinghouse for current and prospective drivers, drug and alcohol violations before permitting those employees to operate a commercial vehicle. And all of that, um, we've got to review every year. I believe I've summarized that properly. On pages thirty-three through thirty-four, policy five-three-three-five, care students with chronic health conditions. As you can see, that is clearly marked and stamped with the do not adopt. Um, is, was Ben's recommendation to the committee that we do not adopt this policy for the reasons of, I believe, um, Ben stopped me if I get anything wrong, that we're already doing most of what the, or all of what this policy says. And if we were to implement this, it would also be very limiting as the selection for the chronic health conditions is pretty limited and we could feasibly be needing to constantly add to that. Is that a pretty good summary? So page thirty-five through, yeah, page thirty-five, authorization to accept and distribute electronic records and to use electronic signatures. It's really a straightforward clarification of the law along with a link to the law. Then we get to page thirty-six to thirty-seven, the school calendar, which adds a phrase to clarify the allowance of professional development that qualifies for student instruction in accordance with the state law. Pages thirty-eight through forty, policy eighty-four-hundred, the school safety information. The addition here is on page thirty-nine, which requires a superintendent to post a report on the district website stating the incidents of crime occurring at school and disaggregated by school building. Pages forty-one through forty-two, policy eight-four-six-two, student abuse and neglect. This updates the reporting of child abuse and neglect to the central registry of the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. It goes on to include board, board authorization of the superintendent to create and implement the selections that we have at the bottom of page forty-one and at the top of page forty-two. Pages forty-three through forty-four, policy eighty-six-hundred, transportation. This update includes a requirement for the operator of a school vehicle to carry their license, a medical examiner certificate and record of continuing education record with them when driving. It includes a district's right to operate video cameras on school buses, and it also touches on providing transportation to our homeless students. The next two policy updates are from the special update from October twenty-twenty, a separate section with its own explanation. And this involves Edgar or the Education Department General Administrative Regulations. In two thousand and fourteen, the U S Department of Education released newly updated regulations. These regulations cover application process, financial management procurement, inventory management, time and effort accountability, cost allowability, record retention and program oversight. Also, the Office of Management and Budget has revised sections of the O M B guidance for grants and agreements, also known as a uniform grant guidance. Pages forty-eight through fifty-one are policy six-one-one-four, cost principles, spending federal funds. Aside from the changes that you see in green, the committee proposed a change at the top of page forty-nine. You will see the word overall in the second from the last line of the paragraph is stricken, but it's not in red because we struck out a word that was in green. Also on this page, the committee added in section I and S to the end of the phrase, so it states approved budget periods instead of budget period. Pages fifty-two through fifty-seven, policy sixty-three-twenty-five, procurement, federal grants and funds. There are seemingly straightforward changes in green and deletions in red. And if you have any questions on this, I'm going to punt to Ben because that these start getting out of my, my common knowledge base of board work. Um, and it just to remind you that these are our first reading. Our second reading will be in two weeks, which I presume then puts, adds this to our business portion of the meeting. And that's all I got unless anyone's got questions.
Thank you for your concise report at this uh, at this hour. Uh, are the questions uh, outside of uh uh, the questions that we've uh already asked or run through our minds here? We'll have an opportunity, if you have a chance to review it, we'll have an opportunity to, to again, for the second reading. We'll have an opportunity, if you have a chance to review it, we'll have an opportunity to again for the second reading. Pro, but anything that we have a concern about Jake?
Yeah, one question for for Rick about that transportation, having to carry licenses and medical exams and all that. What's the what's the penalty or what's, you know, what happens if someone forgets it that day or, you know? How does that work in practice?
That's yet to be determined, but I would look at it as a following our discipline protocols with some progressive discipline. Obviously, people can forget, and we don't want to penalize them severely for, you know, an absence minded day. But if we have a continuous issue where it becomes habitual, then we address the issue.
They will. Some we would spot check with drivers.
They will be taking it if it occurs in with actual incident.
Right, if there's an accident or something and they're asked to produce that stuff, they don't have it, but as far as spot checking and all that goes, we haven't had much of a discussion on how we'll we'll do that if at all. But again, it's another one of these curveballs thrown at us that.
We have every driver has it with them. Believe me when I say this, Pam assures ensures that on a daily basis.
All right, any other questions for Burgett on the policies? Take a minute, there's a lot there. Take a minute to eyeball it one more time before we meet on the twenty-fourth, just to make sure that every one of your questions are answered before we put the policy into play. All right. All right, thank you again, Burgett. We'll move on to the M A S B Board of Directors, Region Eight ballot and Ben, were you going to comment on this or? Did you want?
Yeah, this this came before the board before, and so it is the position, I believe, in which Burgett was a candidate for. So as far as our actions here tonight, Julie, as far as information, what additional information do we need to provide?
In your packet, there was the actual ballot with the candidates listed. And I would need board action tonight, which it's later on the agenda as an action item for you to tell me what candidate you will be selecting so that I can cast our official vote tomorrow.
Okay, just to remind everybody, it was a short time ago, Burgett was expressed a desire to be a candidate. We nominated her and and that's why she's one of four candidates for this particular M A S B board position. We will take action at the end of the meeting on that, but it would be fantastic for Lake Orion, for Burgett to represent not only the our community, but be a great representative on the M A S B board and represent the interests of all schools around the state. So we'll have an opportunity to take action on that very shortly and and we'll keep our fingers crossed that we get the right person in there. All right. So we're going to move on, student achievement and Heidi.
Okay, a few things this evening. As Mark had mentioned before, we are getting ready to kick off our early childhood center, their registration. Mark has been busy preparing flyers and we're looking at sending postcards out as well. So that is what we are gearing up for. The information night, which will be put out there, but I'm looking to make sure this is right, is going to be March fourth from four to seven at CERC. And so families will be receiving this information soon about our new opening of our early childhood center. So that is very exciting and we're looking forward to that as well. And then Mark has also put together some learning highlights from the past couple of weeks. So he has a lot of fun things to share there, things happening in our classroom.
Okay, let me screen share here. And I can okay. As as with last week, you know, similar type of deal. So we had a number of different things that most exciting thing, obviously, is the media graduates from learning options. That's been really exciting that that had that they were able to complete even complete their work even with the challenges here. You know, during this time that they were able to kind of go on and there was five of them and that was really nice. Danielle Anderson, Hannah Burke, Avery Klinger, Skylar Sheldon and Wyatt Sublet. So great job by the learning option students. Sorry, maybe I'm fast here. The Weber kindergarten, Michelle Smith, she's a kindergarten teacher. She secured a four hundred dollar grant to the donors choose for Legos, which is kind of cool. And there's the kids displaying that. This is African American History Month, so it's a great time to highlight that we have a new class at the high school taught by, are you guys seeing that box? No. Okay. Sorry, little off here. What's happening? Sorry about that. African American History Class, you know, we talked about that. And so Michelle Kurtin, who runs that class.
I believe the X he hit was for Zoom. He zoomed away fast.
He'll be back.
All right, we'll kind of coming back.
Okay, we'll keep going on.
All right, let's press on.
Okay. As we said earlier in Dragon Virtual, our scheduling season is starting, especially our high school is first. And so parents and students receive information on February eighth, so just stay tuned to that. And then regarding the bond, today was a very busy day. Blanche Sims Design Committee traveled to Midland to look at a newer elementary there. And then this afternoon, just before the board meeting, we went to Oxford where they have a new kindergarten wing. So the Blanche Sims Design Team right now is in the process of touring different elementary schools that are newer, of course, across the state and finding what we like and what we don't like, which is just as important. And so that will help us in our design of state of Blanche Sims. So that was exciting today. And then also Scripps Design Team met as well. And we actually met in person and toured the office area, the counseling office, the main office to hear what staff had to say, what is working well and what is could work a lot better in those spaces. If you are at all familiar with Scripps, you know that it is the only school in the district where the main office is on the first floor and the counseling office is on the second floor, which has caused challenges throughout the years. So we are really excited to be able to tackle that challenge that we've had to survive through. And that staff is really looking forward to moving on with their design, so. And then in regards to furniture, elementary, I think we're finalized on that. We're going out to bid, I believe, this week. And so you will be seeing that come to fruition soon. I know that we are also working on a presentation to bring to you, hopefully at some point in March. I really want, I was hoping for an in-person. That's not going to be able to happen, so we are working with Mark and we will put a presentation together for you. I really wanted to highlight the teachers who have piloted. I wanted you to hear from students and to see some of the particular furniture. So we will be doing that. It will just be in a video format. I've had to, I've had to go back on really just trying to do in person. I really wanted you to be able to experience the furniture and interact with the kids, but that's not going to be able to happen this time. So we'll prepare the best we can for a presentation. And then secondary pilot for furniture that is started. And so we're just collecting information now from students and staff. So I think that's it regarding bond. Mark, welcome back.
I'm sorry, I don't know what happened, but I guess technology will just blame it on someone else. So we were talking about the African American History Class, so I will try to screen share again here and get back to.
Yes, and Michelle, Michelle Kuratin and Marie McDonald.
Right.
Remember, you approved that class last year. And so this semester, this is their first time running this course. And I had the opportunity to talk with Michelle last week, and I asked her how it was going. And she, without a doubt, says that she absolutely loves this class, loves teaching with Marie, and the kids are really, really enjoying it. And so these are some artifacts that I think that they had brought from their different travels, both Michelle and Marie. So that class is going very, very well.
Yes, thank you, Heidi. Yeah, so as we're going forward here, we can go to the next screen here. The Kindness Challenge is what they've done in the in the high school at in the Special Education Department. They had a really interesting opportunity that they learned about this, the teachers, Eric Meerschatten, Catherine Catherine Anderson, and they brought it to the students and they told them about it. And the students were so excited, they wanted to expand upon it. So what they did is they went to, they connected with the Safe Ed, the security staff in the high school building, and they went forward and and they kind of interacted with them. You can see them giving, they were very proud to make some things and give them and pass them on to the Safe Ed, which is really a cool idea. In terms of the ECC, you know, they've, this is from, these are some shots from before as they transitioned back to in person. But they had, they, it's really hard with the younger students to try to find a way to engage them when they're home. Obviously, you know, they don't sit at the computer as well, so to give them some activities. Kim McLean and her staff found ways to engage them. They were really proud to share those ideas because that's an opportunity to show that even the youngest learners can find things to do at home, even though it's not the traditional as if they're in the classroom. And now they're coming back, obviously, that's better. Stephanie Dukas, who was a teacher at Pink Creek Elementary, she had them categorizing items from their collections, the students, and they were learning how to judge fairly as it led up to opinion essays. And so, you know, that's an interactive opportunity. You can see that this is, and the students are engaged because they're back in the classroom. You see they were in the masks and everything. Wendy Deutsch, teacher at Scripps. You know, the students learned asynchronously about properties of life, and that led them to the discovery of cells. And when students came to the classroom door for their lesson, they were shown yeast and they looked at the yeast and decided it was not living, meaning no cells. And it was like a real world example kind of thing. And they saw some stuff with gases later and the mound grew as as they kind of saw that. Melissa Wilson, who remember was our Teacher of the Year a couple of years ago at Lake Orion High School, she did a fabulous job. And she could, her students, whether it's remote or in person, continue to win awards. They had nearly pieces honored and Priscilla Pham. If I'm pronouncing that right, she she earned the gold key, gold key, and that was for a ray of pieces, which is really special. And obviously, you can see this, I just put a sampling of them, but you can see how talented our students are clearly. The Student Athletes Sign College Signing Event, you know, Chris Spell has done this for a number of years, and it's really been a special opportunity for him, you know, to honor the kids. And it's, they made it a little different, but we did in the auditorium, Ben was there and he saw, it was really unique because the families this time were able to go up and be up there because of the cohorting, you know, with COVID nineteen, the families are grouped. So they were able to go up there and actually be with their student when they signed and be standing next to their student proudly as the coach said the all the items and I'll set all when ran through all the stuff that happens for those students and how proud they were. So it was really, it was a different take on it, but it was kind of a cool take. So it was really a unique thing. In Dragon Virtual, they've had to find different ways to do things. And Emily Petty is one of our kindergarten teachers in Dragon Virtual, and she shared this week about virtual math can be as simple as just drawing a picture to practice using shapes and position words. She's done a really good job of sharing on Twitter, you know, what's happening in a virtual classroom, which is a little harder, obviously. You know, we try to get into the classrooms ourselves and kind of give these opportunities and share these things, you know, whether it's taking pictures or videos. But when they're in person, it's a lot easier and she's done a good job, obviously, of sharing what's happening, you know, in a remote setting. With the snow day meant a lot to a lot of people, you know, they liked having the break, as Ben said. And at Weber, you know, they've really embraced the positivity project. And one thing that, you know, the service aspect of it was something that the principal, Jen Goldfoss, pushed out to her families. Really, when it hap, when the snow day happened, she pushed it out early in the morning and she got a lot of response. And it was really cool to see that the kids, I don't know if I let kid that young on a snowboard, but I'm impressed that they can handle it. I don't think I can handle mine that well. So they're really doing good and they were helping others, not just themselves, which is really nice. You know, these kids are talented, I guess, as well. In terms of, you know, there was some learning tips. You could, I don't know if you can see in the picture, but this is at Oakview Middle School. They they made, even though they're in person, they made tips for the in-person learning. And this is sixth and seventh grade, team six L and team seven O made the in-person learning and the home learning tips, and they posted them and they shared it. So, you know, all of the students kind of feel like they're a part of the school community, even the ones, you know, who are maybe at home now too, which was nice. Rachel Strong is a student teacher, I believe, at Carpenter Elementary. She posted about fifth grade using their new smart boards and their microphones, part of, you know, the Bond Tech projects and stuff, and they presented World War Two research project and placed their event on the class timeline. You can see at the bottom there. And you can't see my hand, but I guess you can see in the second picture there about the timeline and everything. And if you look at the Pine Tree Service, they've done the positivity project as well in their building, and they found ways to, you know, have their students embrace it. And that's been, they made blankets and scarves and pillows to donate to members of the community. And this is part of their service project. And Jillian Knapp, who was the supervisor there, brought it all together. And they donated to the Pontiac Shelter and senior citizens homes in Lake Orion. So there's a lot going on, you know, across the district. And this is just a sampling of the things that were shared with us this week and that we saw. And it's really great to see the students back in because it seems like there's a lot of more engagement within the buildings and stuff. It, you know, they were learning, as we heard earlier tonight, when they're at home. But being in the buildings, there can be more hands-on and more interactive things. So any questions?
Questions for Mark? Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
It's important that we see this and you pull it together very well so we can get a real full overview of some of the things that are happening in the district. So thank you for that. So we'll move on. Is there a curriculum committee report this evening?
There is, and the curriculum committee met last week on Thursday. And the first thing we discussed was Dragon Virtual, which you've heard the full report on that this evening. The second thing we discussed was high school exams. The high, the high schools reviewing how exams went for the semester. We're going to use this information to make decisions as to what will occur for the remainder of the year regarding exams. And in addition, the high schools reviewing their exam policy and will make recommendations for revisions for fall of twenty twenty-one. And when that occurs, it will come to the curriculum committee and then to the board. We started our meeting at eight. It ended at ten fifteen, but I only managed to be there till nine thirty because I completely lost internet. So, Mark, I feel for you. So forty-five minutes I wasn't there and I'm going to punt to Jake and Danielle for what was covered in that timeframe.
Anything to add? Jake, Danielle?
Nothing particular, just so everybody realizes the exam thing. Exams were made optional at for second quarter at Lake Orion High School. And that was more in response to the pandemic, but but Heidi and and the high school staff are working together to see long, long term, you know, what what should happen with exams because there it's one of the things that Heidi said that we've been doing it for a long time and have been wanting to fix it. And this gives, you know, the a bit of the positive impetus to say, you know what? We can do things differently. And this gives, you know, the, a bit of the positive impetus to say, you know what, we can do things differently. So we, we, we tossed around some ideas, you know, and thoughts, but oh, so we'll see, but overall with the direction we gave is there'd be concern to do away with exams. But maybe not making them so impactful.
All right. Thank you. Does that wrap it up? Good. All right. So we'll move on. Human resources and Rick?
I have nothing this evening. No, that disappoints all of you.
Thank you. All right. We'll move on to finance and operations, Jen?
I mean, I get all of Rick's a lot of times. I got a stack. I've got, I've got, I've got nothing.
All right. And facilities liaison report. I thought we had something coming up on that.
There's no report. I actually talked to Wes earlier today. And he is out of town, so it's going to be probably, we'll meet up with him just before the next meeting. And Susan, we're trying to set up a tour of the high school and the CERC. So we'll stay out of a restaurant and, you know, we'll let him buy us a sandwich or something.
All right. That sounds like. All right. Thanks, Scott. All right. That moves us to action items and may have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the following consent agenda items. Approved payment of the January bills in the amount of seven million, three hundred and sixty five thousand, nine hundred and twenty one dollars and fifty seven cents. Approved the minutes from the January twenty seventh, twenty twenty one regular meeting and closed session and February second, twenty twenty one curriculum committee meeting. And also the Head Start Coordinator's report.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Julie, please.
Can I make a comment about it?
Yes, please.
So Heidi included in the report when she submitted the minutes, her strategic plan update that we haven't covered yet in our curriculum committee meeting, we'll be covering that the next meeting, but there, you have that in your, you can read it in the packet.
Great. Thank you for that comment. All right. Any other comments? All right, Julie, please.
Ms. Bressat?
Yes.
Mr. Draco? Oh, let me get him unmuted here. Mr. Draco?
Yes.
Clarity?
Yes.
Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weedman?
Yes. Consent agenda is approved. May have a motion to authorize submission of the M A S B Board of Directors, Region Eight ballot.
I move to authorize the Superintendent Secretary to submit the M A S B Board of Directors, Region Eight ballot on behalf of the district selecting, selecting Burgett McQuiston for the position.
All right. Is there support? There's lots of support. All right. Julie?
Ms. Bressat?
Yes.
Mr. Draco?
Yes.
Ms. Clarity?
Yes.
Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weedman?
Yes. The submission of the M A S B Board of Directors, Region Eight ballot is authorized by the board.
Good luck, Burgett.
We're counting on you. All right. So we'll move on to recap the next steps. Ben?
I did not pick up on anything to follow up on in tonight's meeting.
Okay, all right. And closing comments, we'll start with Rick.
Nothing further.
Thank you, Jen.
Good evening.
All right, Heidi?
Nothing further.
All right, thanks. Ben?
I just wanted to thank people in advance for the feedback and input as we proceed. And then also I just wanted to mention, I'm really thankful and proud, you know, of the district for not only educating the students during this time, but we continue to lead forward with our, you know, improving the programs. You saw Dragon Virtual and all the work that we're doing. We're not sitting back and just doing this year. We're moving forward, all the work on the bond and all the innovation. So thank you to everybody and I'm glad to be part of such a great organization.
Thank you, Ben. Jake?
I want to thank everybody who presented tonight and then the many more who went into helping support those programs because it was, it, it's exciting to see Dragon Virtual and it was great to see that our students are achieving and, and that we're, we're doing everything we can to, to help everybody get the best educational experience possible.
All right. Thank you, Jake. Steve?
Well said, Jake. Good evening, everybody. Have a safe night. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan?
Yes, I agree. Well said. Just thank you to everybody from my side as well. I appreciate it. I know a lot of hard work and a lot of hours went into the presentations we had tonight. So appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. Danielle?
Um, yeah, I echo the sentiments. Thank you to Missy Buckkey tonight. That was really informative and, you know, much needed. I know the board's been talking about student achievement quite a bit. And a huge thank you to Heidi and her whole team for Dragon Virtual. You know, we get compared to other districts a lot, some neighbors to the north in their virtual program. And I think we have something really special here and unique and, you know, something that's going to be great. So thanks so much.
All right. Thank you. Burgett?
Somebody's got sirens. So yeah, I want to join the kudos to the people that presented tonight, especially to Missy and Nick and for their time. And there were so many administrators that were on tonight that didn't even get to speak. And I appreciate that they sat through all of that and were with us. I appreciate their support and I know they had a lot of work to do with us. So thank you, Heidi, and your staff for all that work. I want to thank my board for your support as I move forward with the Board of Directors. Time will tell, three weeks is when the, the votes are due. So I truly sincerely appreciate your support. And lastly, I wanted to share something with you. I discovered on our website that it occurs this weekend, February eleventh through thirteenth. The, our high school thespians are presenting an on-demand performance of the Help Desk and Thirty Nine Steps. So you can go on, I haven't done it yet to purchase my tickets, but I thought it was kind of cool between eleven thirteenth, you could watch their, their production on demand at home. So join me in doing that at some point this weekend and have a, everyone happy winter break, those of you that get off.
Thank you, Burgett.
I was going to echo the same sentiment as far as all the, the, the two doctors and, and Mrs. Manzo sitting here for the whole, for the most of the meeting and then we didn't hear from them. It was just good to see them and I'd like to thank everybody for being there and have a great night.
Thank you, Scott. And I, I share the thanks of the board for the leadership Heidi's provided to so many people in this effort and making the Dragon Virtual, the program that it is and that it's becoming and that it will be in the future as we move along the continuum. On that note, I'd like to say good night and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.